Planning Commission meeting for March 2nd. The time is 5:30 a.m. And I'd like to start with a roll call, please, if staff could do that.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
And Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
And Vice Chirice?
Here.
Great. I thought we usually go to a director's report. Do we have a director's report right now?
Yes, we do, Jim. So coming up at your next meeting, which will be April 6th, actually, the March 16th meeting is canceled. So your next meeting will be April 6th. We will have items scheduled, but they haven't been decided yet. And then April 20th, ROI for Economic Recovery IZO, 1803 Euclid Street Track Map, 2800 Wilshire Boulevard CUP, and then election of officers. We are in the process, in terms of reopening, we have made a lot of progress at City Hall, so if you've been there, you know, front doors are open, fountains are running, the counters are open, so we have come a long way. We are in the process of reviewing what happens with commission and board meetings and in-person versus not. And we anticipate there'll be some changes within the next month or so, possibly before your next meeting on April 6th, and in which case, we will obviously let you know about it. But just wanted to give you a heads up that we appear to be, no surprise, but appear to be getting that closer to in-person meetings. We just don't know exactly when that will happen, but we want to give you that heads up. So that's on reopening. Upcoming at council, February 22nd, the Carl Thorpe School Appeal was continued. Basically, the council just ran out of time. They spent, I think, four hours on the pure vending issue. So they really, they just ran out of time, so continued the item. And then Melissa Pastor's resignation has been accepted and the vacancy is posted. So hopefully, we'll see progress on getting a new commissioner soon. Upcoming at council on March 8th is the appeal of the Wellness Center, 124220th. So this is a project the commission approved. That approval was appealed to council. On March 15th, the continued Carl Thorpe School Appeal, and then also the SB 9 study session. And then on March 22nd, the St. John's Development Agreement. So as you can see, planning staff has a very busy march coming up. And to make it even more difficult, we're saying farewell tonight to Melissa. So Melissa Zach has done great work for the division, the department, certainly for the Planning Commission. You know, this was a challenging time we just went through with COVID and with the different ways of running meetings and interacting with the public and managing the commission and helping staff. Melissa's really stepped up and done an awesome job. And that's just one of the things that she's done for the division. So we really are going to miss her, but we wish her the best. She's moving on to brighter things and happy to have had her in the division for a while and wish her all the best. I think Jim wants to add on to that as well.
Yes, I do. So as you know, David mentioned, this is Melissa's final meeting with the Planning Commission. She's leaving for an amazing promotional opportunity in another city. Melissa's been with us for a little over three years, and she's just been an amazing and reliable team member. As you know, the administrative team is the glue that holds our whole division together. They support the permit process and provide amazing service to our boards and commissions. And Melissa's been really the bedrock of that administrative team. So she's done amazing work in adapting to these virtual meeting formats throughout the emergency and to train applicants and to facilitate public comment, among many, many things that people have no idea that go about that keep the engine running. So Melissa, we're really going to miss you and your ability to make everything look easy in this meeting. Just your contributions to city planning are greatly, greatly appreciated. And we really thank you for your support to the division, to the Planning Commission, and wish you all the best in your next role.
Thank you so very much. And, you know, thanks to all you commissioners too, you guys have been great to work with. And I've learned so, so much sitting through these meetings. I'm not a planner by training, so definitely have learned a lot and have really enjoyed it. So it's been a really great, great opportunity that I've had here with Santa Monica, and I am going to miss it, but I'm excited for what's next.
Great. Well, Melissa, we will all miss you as well, and we thank you for your hard work and dedication to the city and wish you the best in your next endeavor.
Thank you.
Other commissioners want to chime in? At this moment, not agenda, so we need to be a little careful. But go ahead, Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, the work we do would be meaningless were it not for the opportunities for transparency and public participation that Melissa has made possible. And it's by no means an easy job, and we're incredibly grateful for the hard work you've done and wish you the best moving forward.
Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yeah, I would like to second that. And what I really appreciate in Melissa is how quickly you responded to things. It's always a lot of times in dealing with bureaucracies, there's molasses, but with Melissa, you get the email right away, and that was really useful and much appreciated. So thank you.
Thanks for noticing.
Commissioner Landris?
Yep, I actually have questions for David when we're done. But I just really want to express my appreciation to Melissa. Worked with you throughout your tenure as our secretary or whatever the official term is, liaison maker of things. I think Ellis put it right when he said, "We just wouldn't be able to do this if you weren't around to make it happen with such, with such speed and grace and good humor." So I will lift our pre-meeting check-ins.
Commissioner Fresco?
All of that, and I just want to add, nobody can read public comment like Melissa. You are amazing.
It's been a long time since we've had to do that, yeah.
It was so good.
How do you know? That's not my next career move.
I didn't think it would really add a big skill to your set, but it was really enjoyable.
Thanks.
Commissioner Lambert?
I just want to second what everybody else has said, Melissa. And what I find so refreshing about you is your upbeat and your positive, and you're actually much nicer to us than we are to each other. And that's supposed to be funny, but it's not. And I wish you the best where you're going, and I'm glad you hear it's not something we said, it's just any way. So good luck.
Definitely not. So thank you guys very much. I'll turn my camera on since you never get to see me anymore these days. But thanks, it's been a great experience. So, all right, off to the meeting. Thank you so much.
We look forward to hearing from you.
Yeah.
I still live here locally, so you never know. I'm around.
Excellent.
Okay, we're going to turn to questions for the director now. Commissioner Landris?
Yeah, so thank you. I have a couple of questions about the transition back to in-person. So one, just a couple of observations. I believe that there are some availability constraints on all of us for the next different commissioners at different times that we should talk about. And so what I was going to ask is that I think that it is appropriate for us to move to or return, but I also want to make sure that the public is fully noticed. And rather than have to have it happen in a whiplash kind of way, I think it would be more appropriate for us to look at a date like April 20th, which is after spring break, which is after the new commissioner will be appointed, and sort of as soon as possible, make it very public, right? Then as of that date, we will, I would not like to see an announcement on March 25th that the April 6th meeting is going to be in person. I think that's not, I don't think that's good for public process. And we've had remote participation. But I'd like to request, if it's possible, that we, A, coordinate on our availability for the next couple of meetings, and B, you know, pick a date that is at least 30 days out and say, you know, this is the date that the Planning Commission will return in person.
Right. Yeah, and that's, I mean, we're definitely looking at those kind of issues. Obviously, just with noticing, that has to be figured out well in advance. So we will, we will look at all of that when we come up with the actual date. It's just that we know, you know, things are starting to shift. And again, we don't know exactly when, but we understand, I understand what you're saying in terms of notice.
Okay. And I also would just sort of add, if there's work to be done on the housing element, I'm still available March 16th.
Commissioner Lambert?
David, I just have a question. When we talk about going back in public, are we talking about the public actually coming into the meetings?
Yes. So we would go back to really the meetings as they used to be. At this point, there wouldn't be any call-in options, so it would be people coming back into the meetings, into the council chambers.
I hate to be the EOR in this process, but are we going to ask for proof of vaccination at all or just let anyone in?
Yeah, I mean, all of that has to be figured out. I don't think we've landed on exactly what's required. But that will certainly be discussed. What we're looking at is, you know, we will likely get to a point where, you know, we have to have in-person meetings. And so we have to go back into the chambers. And that's what, you know, when that actually is required, we're not sure what that date is. But we are, you know, this is a heads up, and we are going to do as much as we can to, you know, map it out and give everybody as much notice as possible. But yeah, it's a big change back to the way it used to be.
Thank you.
So my only question slash comment is, you know, we've, I've seen a lot more public participation with Zoom meetings and caller, you know, virtual meetings. It'd be a shame if we would lose out on that. I'm wondering if there's a way we could do a hybrid. I assume you're kind of looking at that and see if it's possible. But again, we just had such good participation.
Yeah, yeah, that's a comment we've heard a lot and we agree with. We have looked at it. It looks, it appears at this point that there's not resources to do both, to have a hybrid, because it's much more labor-intensive to have the call-in. And it either doubles or maybe triples the number of staff people you have to have managing the meetings. So from a, just a resource perspective, it doesn't seem like that's going to be possible. It will just be back to, just that, you know, people could come to the meetings as they did before.
Okay. Any other questions of the director at this point? Not seeing any.
Sorry, sorry. I just, sorry, just to Commissioner Lambert's question, I do think we need an analysis of the, I mean, the city does, right? Of the issues with requiring vaccination versus, versus, you know, testing versus letting the public in. If you are curious about shutting down remote public comment, I would like, I think we need to stay virtual longer because that could ultimately mean that immunocompromised people are not able to participate. And I think we have to have a level playing field for all members of the public to participate on an equitable basis in our meetings. So if there is legal ground to make some of those distinctions, I hope that we will have the opportunity to review it and give you our feedback. And the council obviously has to deal with the same issues, so this is not just us. But I do think concern.
Okay, yeah, and we will definitely keep you in the loop as much as possible. I mean, the city has to come up with, you know, boards and commissions meeting policy across the board. So, you know, that's part of what we're working with here. So, but yeah, definitely keep you in the loop.
Okay.
All right.
One last call for questions, anybody? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. So at this point, I want to get to other commissioner announcements. I want to make a couple of announcements first, and I'll open it up to commissioners. Please note tonight's procedures for public comment. We are accepting real-time oral public comment by phone for each item. Please check the top of the posted agenda for the phone number to call once the caller queue or each item opens. The caller queue will open when each item is introduced and will close after the first five public commenters have been heard. Written comments received up until noon today have been distributed and read by the planning commissioners. Comments received after 12:00 p.m. will be considered part of the record of the proceedings, but may not be posted online with the planning commissioner's regular agenda prior to the meeting. Also want to highlight that the moderator chat function in blue jeans is for technical help only. You cannot communicate with the staff or the commissioners. We are not able to see any of that. This is only if you have technical problems for staff. At this point, I'd like to ask if any commissioners have any announcement. I see one hand. Commissioner Lambert, please.
I just want, you know, to let you guys know, I may be in and out because I have a dog recovering here from surgery, and he's tearing the cone off his head. And then it's not a good situation. So if I have to leave, that's why. But I'll be back.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to turn to the consent calendar of item 2A, which is a resolution of intent, adoption of resolution number 22-008PCS, declaring the Planning Commission's intention, "Consider recommending to the city council that the city council amend the text of the zoning ordinance to implement SB 9 and California Housing Opportunity More Efficiency or Home Act." At this point, I'd like to ask Melissa to open up the caller queue for the public and remind people that the caller info is on the screen as well as the agenda. I think I'd also, at this moment, while we're leaving the caller queue open, ask if any commissioners want to pull this off of the consent calendar and discuss it. Did Commissioner Raskin's hand up?
Yeah, I just have some terrifying questions about the scope of the ROI. I don't know if we necessarily have to pull it to address those questions, but if we do, then I would like to pull it.
Okay. I assume to discuss it, we will need to pull it. So if you would make a motion, and I think we'll need a motion in a second to do it.
So moved.
I'll second it. Can we get a vote?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And Vice Chirice?
Yes. So why don't you go ahead and ask your questions, and I will just take the option to remind the public that their caller, the call-in number is on the screen. And if they have questions, this would be the time to call in about this item.
Chair, do you need a motion to waive the staff report? I don't know if we have to do that.
Yes, since it's been pulled from consent, it's probably cleanest.
Okay, I move we waive the staff report.
Second.
Andrew and Raskin, okay, holding staff report. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert? She's gone for a. Yeah. Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And Vice Chirice?
Yes. Great. With no staff reports, we will allow, I think, do we have any callers at this moment?
Not yet.
Okay, so then if Commissioner Raskin, you want to ask your questions, would be appropriate now?
Yeah, you know, as I read the text of this, it seems to be broadly tailored so that we can really do whatever is necessary to influence SB 9. But, you know, I just want to, you know, I would like to make sure that, you know, for the public record, that we have opportunities to also potentially amend ancillary regulations, laws, for example, ADU laws, for example, urban forestry laws that might be affected through the implementation of SB 9. And so I, you know, to what extent is it clear that that's part of the understanding of the scope of what we're doing here?
So I'm happy to start, and the planning manager can jump in. I think it is drafted that broadly with that intent. The chapters that are referenced and sections that are referenced in the attachment to the ROI are designed to give the commission and the public some general ideas, but they are included and not limited to. So if the discussion goes in a particular direction, but it is still related to implementation of SB 9, you're not limited to just those chapters that are listed in the ROI. Does that help?
That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Great. Is that the extent of your questions, Mr. Commissioner Raskin?
It is, yes, thank you.
Okay. Melissa, can you tell us if we have a caller?
We do not.
Okay, I think at this point, unless there is any more discussion, I would look for a motion on this issue.
So moved.
Second.
Raskin and second by Fonda Bernardi.
Commissioner, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes. No.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
I hate to do this, you guys, but I'm alone with the dog, and he's opened up his incision, so I am going to have to do something other than kill him. I'm so sorry.
Don't worry about it. If you can make it back, please do. But if not, we understand. Good luck with that. If that, I am going to move to, agenda items three is our study session. And tonight, we have discussion and possible direction regarding the letter dated February 8th, 2022, from California Department of Housing and Community Development, from, well, I'm sorry, from the California Housing and Community Development regarding our housing element. And at this point, I'd like to open the caller queue as well as ask staff to give their presentation.
So we do not have a presentation prepared tonight necessarily. This, just to provide context for this item. So the purpose of this was to be responsive to the commission's desire to discuss the HCD comments in open session as a group. I think we heard that from you at our last meeting. And, you know, I've heard individually from commissioners since the comments were issued. At this moment in time, staff continues to work through the comments, and we don't have, you know, further information to provide about them other than, you know, what's provided by the HCD's comments. It is taking time to review the previously completed analysis. You know, as you're well aware, you've been a part of this process. A lot of work and analysis has already been done. And part of that is, you know, revisiting the entire SSI, you know, for one thing. And so, you know, we have had one preliminary call with HCD just to walk through the comments and, you know, get, kind of answer our questions and just sort of introductory questions. And then, you know, what we'll be doing is working through an iterative process with the reviewers, you know, as we kind of think through each piece and kind of it's going to have to go back and forth. So for tonight, you know, I think, again, it was an opportunity for the commission to hold a discussion regarding the comments. And, you know, attached to your agenda is a memo prepared by three of the commissioners, you know, that they asked to be shared with that. So that's been posted to the agenda. Any comments or suggestions that you wish to make tonight will be taken into consideration. But, you know, at this time, because we are working through the comments, we'll be working with the reviewers. You know, we're not really in a position to commit to, you know, any one possible direction or approach because ultimately, we will need to work through a process to return to council for, you know, re-adoption of the element. So it's, you know, basically repeating the process that we went through before. So that's, I think, you know, providing context for the, for tonight's item and sort of, you know, where your, the commission's comments and suggestions, you know, will be, where it fits into the process at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you very much, staff. Commissioner Landris?
Yeah, before we get into the substance of it, I just actually would like to ask a question about process, which is to say that the original process was that the Planning Commission had the ball, and then we passed it to council, and council did its work, and then sent it on to HCD. And this is, I don't know what's in the rulebook. Does it come back to us formally? Does it only go back to council, and then council has the discretion to ask for our opinion? I mean, what is the, where are we in terms of what's happening next?
I think we.
The substance, right? Just process only.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. And, you know, we are working through that. But I think overall, absolutely, you know, there would be, like I said, a repeat, you know, of the process that we've already been through. I would anticipate, you know, having the commission make its recommendation to council on revisions. And then council, obviously, you know, ultimately being the decider, you know, on end. And, you know, they'll make an adoption or revise. But what I was referring to was more like the process to get to that point. You know, it is, I think all I can say is, you know, we appreciate your patience with this because it is, it does take time to work through. There are, there is nothing in the statute that provides guidance at this point. You know, there's not like another clock that revives, that, that kicks off anything. You know, there's not like a 90 days or something. It's really an iterative process, you know, that we're in right now. And there's obviously many iterations. And, you know, part of that is also, you know, we're in a period of non-compliance at the moment, you know, on the housing element. And, you know, so if it sounds like, you know, we're sort of just feeling our way through, we are because there are approaches that, you know, there's many ways that you could approach a response to the comments, and we really need time and space to work with. You know, the reviewer is HCD and obviously review it internally and then, you know, return to the commission, you know, to restart that formal process of your recommendation to the council.
Okay. There's a follow, okay, I want to follow up on that, but I saw Commissioner Fonda Bernardi hand up first.
Yeah, you know, this is, when I read the letter, it seemed that they were requiring an amazing amount of analysis and a lot of analysis that's actually very difficult to do accurately. And they were asking for a level of detail and a level of accuracy that's very hard to credibly obtain. In other words, anyone can say things, but there's very hard to put in the substances why something is likely to happen or not likely to happen. And there are many things like that. Did you feel that way, or is it just me?
Um, you know, I think that was, that was part of like our, this iterative process with the reviewer is kind of seeking that clarification. You know, I appreciate that. I think anyone who reads this letter, you know, you may have different, you may interpret it differently, you know, and sort of, you know, jump to any number of approaches. But, you know, it is certainly, I think, is an overarching concept. The comments as written do ask for more information and sort of connecting the dots, if that makes any sense, in terms of the analysis that's been done. And I think that what we are going to continue to seek clarification on is, you know, whether, you know, once we have reviewed the analysis that's done and then sort of connect the dots and have a chance to talk with reviewers is, you know, whether that meets the bar or is there further analysis that is needed? Because, you know, it doesn't. Because, you know, it doesn't, the comments themselves, you know, don't necessarily say like, you know, this is exactly what you need to do, right? It's sort of a, in, in some of the, the comments, it's somewhat general, you know, and so we, we need time to sort of work through, you know, what is meant by that and what is the expectation, you know, so that upon submittal, you know, that we have a good sense that it will be accepted for certification, you know, in the, in the next revision. That, that is the goal.
So I have two more questions. In your initial discussions with HCD, did you feel like you had, let's say, a responsive audience where they could actually tell you exactly what they wanted as opposed to these vague things about asking for more and more and more? I'm wondering if we're really stuck in a slippery slope now where every time we do something, it's not enough. Every time we do something else, not enough. And I'm wondering if you're getting that feeling because I was reading that thing. I thought it looked like they hadn't actually read our proposal, like they were reading some other city's proposal.
Um, you know, I think that's, that, that's part of an ongoing conversation, you know, so, you know, I don't think I could, I, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm in a position to characterize it one way or the other, you know, with sort of just working through it at the moment. And, you know, the comments are, you know, what they are and, and, you know, like I said, certainly it is asking for more information in some ways. And in other ways, it's, you know, it appears to be clarification that is requested in terms of how, how we got to a conclusion. So, you know, some of it is maybe the, maybe the, the pass from HCD, you know, was not clearly understood.
Okay, my last question is, how many cities failed their, and SCAG failed their test? And how many cities passed?
So as far as I'm aware and, and, you know, don't take my word like a hundred percent for it because we kind of have to go off the, the websites, just like everybody else. From what we can see, and this was when we checked a couple of weeks ago, there were two jurisdictions in SCAG that have certified elements and then two others that have what are called drafting compliance letters. So out of all of SCAG, it's, seems like it's four cities, you know, that, that have what are deemed to be compliant housing elements are on their way there.
Well, you know, and when there's 190 cities, you just wonder if, it's not the cities that are failing, but there's a public policy failure right here, right, staring us when that many people, when that many students fail the test, you wonder about the teachers, is what I'm saying. And I think we're in that position now where we've done a lot of work, as has the staff, as has the community. And we feel like, in a sense, I feel that we're, we've made a good faith effort, but I'm not sure there's good faith coming back the other way. So I'd like your opinion on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it, there is, I think we shared with the council actually a letter that SCAG actually sent on behalf of the member cities. They sent it to the legislature essentially requesting an informational hearing on behalf of SCAG cities because, you know, so many cities are, have been deemed out of compliance and they're basically, you know, requesting that hearing to be able to, to share, I think, the viewpoints of, you know, SCAG speaking on behalf of, of the region, I think, you know, somewhat addressing your point in terms of, you know, the opportunity to have a dialogue about the process, especially, you know, not even just for now, but also in preparation for future housing element cycles, you know, that there be the opportunity to, to, to have a lessons learned. This is, this is a new cycle, you know, that, that this is a, a very unique, it's, it's the first time that we're testing the implementation of a slew of housing element laws that have come into place since 2017, you know? So, you know, it does feel very much like not only, not only are we learning, but, you know, HCD is also probably, you know, learning as well in, in terms of how to bring all of that into fruition, you know? So, you know, I, I, I hear you, you know, and, and I think, you know, when we've put two, you know, almost two, two years of work into this, it, you know, felt like a, a little bit of a, of a setback, you know, but I think we're committed, you know, as we are, we're, we're still committed to revising and eventually getting to a certified element. But I guess just sharing with you at least, that's what's happening on a regional context, you know, in terms of the letter that, that SCAG sent to, to the assembly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Raskin, I think you have some questions?
I do, but Chair is going to get a follow-up question earlier. I, I cut into that.
Yeah, I, okay. So my follow-up was with just kind of a process and where we are, my address is, you know, can we just outline some of the potential impacts that we have from this out of compliance situation, just so that we're reminded and the public's reminded? I, I, you know, I, I agree, staff has worked very hard to get to where we're at and we, we put together a good faith effort, but we didn't pass the test. So I'm concerned that we have issues with, there's funding streams for affordable housing or transportation issues are in jeopardy until we come into, into compliance. So that's kind of a question for you to confirm. And I'm also questioning, when does SB thirty-five start rearing its head on, in all of our income levels? And then what other impacts are, should we be concerned about?
Uh, sure. So good, good question. In terms of, at this moment in time, because just to give you an understanding of, you know, where the city fell out of compliance, it is HCD's position that the city actually needed to have had a certified housing element by October fifteenth, 2021. So, you know, we obviously did not have that. We adopted before that date, but didn't have it certified before that date. And then in addition, you know, we were required a hundred, within 120 days of that October fifteenth deadline, you know, to, if you didn't meet that date, you know, then you had to meet that sort of second date, which would have been February, I guess, something. I don't, anyways, February 12th, I think it was, but obviously did not meet that. So, you know, those are two areas, you know, where they've indicated that the city is, you know, currently out of compliance, like many, many other cities in SCAG at this point. Two immediate things, you know, rise up as a result of that. One, as you noted, is the city is not eligible for some funding programs that depend on housing element compliance. At the moment, we are aware of one funding application that is used for a hundred percent affordable housing, you know, that is on hold because of that. And there is also another funding cycle, I guess, coming up, you know, that also deals with affordable housing that the city would be ineligible for if the housing element was not in compliance at that point. The second piece is that there is a provision within the Housing Accountability Act that basically requires, and Heidi, please jump in if I am speaking about this in any way. It's a, the, the city would be obligated, essentially cannot disapprove a project that has at least 20% of the units affordable to households up to 60% AMI or it's a hundred percent moderate. It doesn't speak to process. It's sort of, you know, doesn't really give much detail on that provision other than that. So, you know, just marrying that together with our process thresholds, IZO, if a project came in that had the 20%, the way that provision reads is that that particular project does not need to comply with existing zoning or general plan. So it could certainly not meet any of those things. But because that project, you know, if that was the kind of project that came in, it wouldn't meet objective standards. And so I think we've interpreted that to, you know, probably go through like a DR process, but it would still have the protections as an HAA project if it met the definition of housing development project. You know, so that's, I think, sort of like a summary, you know, of, of two, two immediate impacts. One is funding and then one is, you know, the city's inability to disapprove a project that has certain affordability levels. There's also a requirement to rezone to meet our arena, I guess, by October fifteenth of 2022. That is one area where I think fortunately we have done, as, as you're well aware, you know, we, we are way, way deep into a lot of implementation work, you know, before we had to pause on this. But that is another requirement that the city has to complete rezoning and that's within the statute because we're out of compliance right now. We have to rezone by October fifteenth, 2022 to accommodate the arena. So that's kind of in a nutshell where, where we're at at the moment. Oh, and you asked about SB thirty-five. That's more of a longer term impact. So that, that determine, that determination will be made next year with next year's APR. So April one, you know, of 2023. And I think then they issue determinations somewhere like May or June, I believe. So that's when, you know, a potential SB thirty-five impact would, would, would hit us.
Okay, thank you very much. But it sounds like the developer, the option where you have the 20% is somewhat similar to an SB thirty-five process.
Uh, yeah, except SB thirty-five has like a huge amount of like preconditions, one of which is like prevailing wage, which we've heard from, you know, some housing providers is not, has not been something that, that has been helpful, you know, in pursuing that, that avenue. So there is a difference in, in terms of SB thirty-five provisions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Landris, I think you have some questions. Oh, hold on. I think Commissioner Raskin was waiting for me to ask those follow-ups. So, Anderson, unless it's a follow-up to my follow-up, let's let Commissioner Raskin.
I was sort of a follow-up to your follow-up, only in the sense that I wondered when council has, I mean, I know that council is trying to shorten its meetings, so, which obviously limits the agenda. Do you have a sense at this point of when you, I mean, given the dates that you've shared with us, working backwards, do you have a sense of when you think that we're going to be doing the work that will get to a, you know, get, get us to a, to a new submission? I can't hear. Can you hear me?
No, I, I hear you, but I think staff is contemplating a response. Staff, are you still with us?
So lonely.
I think Jane is having audio issues. Give us a second.
Okay. I know scheduling can sometimes stun us all into silence.
Especially scheduling this effort.
Yeah.
Well, I, I will take this moment of silence to just say, having sat through a City of L.A. Planning Commission meeting last week and them getting their, their letter of rejection from HCD, they were equally upset that they got this rejection. The members of that board, one of them being a SCAG member, equated this process to, they are asking us to drive the car down the freeway while we're building it and they're not giving us instructions. So there's a lot of, a lot of individuals out there, a lot of entities that are feeling very frustrated by this process.
And there's no gas in the tank either.
And no money in our wallets.
That's what I mean.
Good metaphor. Right.
I'll tell you, while waiting for, do you have a question for Rachel that might be appropriate to ask now?
Please go ahead.
Rachel, have, have any colleagues given any thought to whether the revisions that need to be conducted could potentially result in any environmental impacts that weren't contemplated, disclosed, assessed, analyzed or mitigated in the EIR?
Um, yes. Yeah. Hi, Jane.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just to answer quickly, Commissioner Raskin's question, yes, we've talked about it, it really depends on the extent of the revisions. Obviously, if we are looking at upzoning a lot more, that results in a lot more capacity, that is above what we've studied, we would have to go back and revisit the EIR.
Hi there, I think I'm back. Can you hear me now?
We hear you, Jane.
Yeah. Sorry, this Bluetooth headset's giving me fits. So to go back to Commissioner Landris' question, kind of about the, the schedule, at the moment, we've, we just kind of have a placeholder on the council calendar in the summer. And I think, I, I don't, I don't have a clear answer than that because of the time necessary to like revisit the analysis and kind of go back and forth with HCD. Because I think we would like to have some sense of, I, I think I heard Commissioner Reese talk about LA's reaction and the sort of like driving the car while you're building it with no instruction manual. I think what we're trying to get is the instruction manual, like trying to get some specificity around what is it, you know, that is needed to be responsive to the comments and then also for those, for our revisions to be accepted. I think that we want some level of confidence about that, you know, so that we don't come back to the commission and the council and it feels like we're sort of flying in the dark again, you know, because we've kind of been through like, you know, a couple of rounds of this already and we, we prefer that, you know, this, this next revision we do is, is the right one. So at this moment, I just have that placeholder. I don't think we've, you know, it may very well be that we need to do kind of a study session on approach because, you know, depending on where we land, you know, with the SSI, it may, you know, well be like, you know, that I, you know, to, to Commissioner Raskin's point, you know, what the impact on NEIR would be, you know, if we're, if we're studying, you know, more units than we originally were studying before, you know, that has implications, you know, but I just don't think we have, we have those answers at the moment. I just, you know, I, I can only talk broadly about like the process that we're going to go through and, you know, that, that we will return to the commission and council, you know, in at least a couple of rounds of maybe, you know, it's a direction and then it's, you know, before adoption. So there will be that opportunity for that.
Okay. More, any other questions from commissioners at this point? Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, I do have just a few other quick questions. I, I'm curious, you know, if you have coordinated with other cities to try to find answers to issues that predominate among various jurisdictions gag?
Um, yeah, we are, we are actually in a little working group with all of the Westside cities and the staffs that are working on housing elements. I can't say that there's any magic answers, you know, happening in there. I think, you know, the people who, cities who have received comments thus far, whether, you know, on their draft or on what they've adopted, you know, we are, we are reading comments, we've downloaded a ton of them to get a sense of, you know, what's being said across gag. And I think, you know, the comments are, they're not that dissimilar, I guess, you know, so there is, there is, you know, certainly some, some frustration, I guess, you know, around what is it that is expected.
And, you know, just to revisit the question about, about timing. So if I understand it correctly, then is the goal to, you know, have the council be finished with everything by June so that we can move forward with the implementation by October or is that just, is it too soon to tell at this point?
Yeah, I think, I think it is too soon to tell at this point. You know, I, yeah, I just, I can't quite conceive what, what we will be doing in, in, in June, you know, kind of working backwards from October and, you know, what that means. It's sort of like trying to do implementation while you're trying to revise the element that isn't even certified yet. It just feels like, you know, I think that, that's why we pause on the implementation because we actually need to know what target it is that you're aiming for, you know, and that's, that's the work, you know, that needs to happen in an iterative process with HCD.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I know locally, we've, we've really made an effort to try to involve the Housing Commission and Midboard in the process of, you know, contributing to the housing element process. And I'm curious if there are plans for you to go back to those bodies at any point before June? And I'm curious if there are plans for you to go back to those bodies at any point before June?
You know, yeah, this has been a real, it's been a broad participation process. And I think, you know, we will, we will endeavor to involve them in, you know, any way that is appropriate with respect to the comments. If we think that, you know, there is an issue that is being raised that would be helpful to get their input, you know, we will, of course, make our, make our visits, you know, to any appropriate board and commission. And for, and we obviously work very closely with our partners, you know, in, in community services on this, on this work and also the Midboard.
Yeah, I've got a few more questions about, you know, the nuts and bolts of very specific things we could probably get into as we go through the letter that was circulated as part of the agenda packet. Well, I'll cut off my questions here.
Well, do any other commissioners have comments at this point? Or should we, we use that letter as a, a jump off spot to start talking about it? So not seeing any other, other questions. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind going through this letter and asking a few questions. And I'm not sure, you know, to the extent staff has any questions or concerns about it, but seems like that would be a good use of our next steps unless others have other suggestions. Not hearing any, I would say, let's, let's spend a little time talking about this letter and the suggestion options. Commissioner Landers, since, yeah, since you are part of the, you and Commissioner Fresco, if one of you want to give us a little overview of your, of your thoughts when you put this together or anything we should look at or focus on while we're reviewing this?
This is my question. Did you want to start with the HCD letter or did you want to start with our letter? Because it might make sense to go through the HCD letter and make sure that we're all, you know, in terms of our response to HCD and then, and then get to what, what Commissioner Fresco and Lambert and I put together. It sounded like Commissioner Raskin had more on the HCD letter.
I was talking like your letter. I think we've already used the letter. I don't think we need to go through it personally, but I'll defer to the chair.
I mean, because I did have a comment about the HCD letter that was independent of them.
Well, that's, that's the basis for where we should start with. But Commissioner Fresco, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to point out that the way that letter started was just a table that went through every section of the HCD letter. And what we thought we could do, I mean, there were a lot of things, well, staff is going to have to do that. But what we thought we could do in our purview to respond to it. And then, once we did that, we kind of just distilled it into the things we did, could do rather than focusing it on the structure of the letter. So at least if that is helpful for you to understand how they relate.
So dear, talk to me, I mean, so see, I think that table would be, I was trying to think to myself, if I was doing this in staff shoes, how would I go about this? Yeah, I would start with, with a table that kind of compares, that kind of compares what is HCD comments versus what our housing element said and another table of how we could address that, that work.
That's what we did.
Okay, if you started that work, whether staff supports this or not, I think you should send it to staff so they have a template to start to work with. Because they have a lot of work and they don't have a lot of staff. So if you have done some of that groundwork, that would probably be helpful to them.
But we can probably do that. But I, but I think prior to that, I think it's, I do think it's important to, I mean, Commissioner Fondabarnardi alluded to some of this in his comments, you know, where we are in terms of the process with HCD and structurally what the letter was. There are a couple of things that I wanted to say that, in response to the letter, independently of where we were trying to go with, with our memo. One of which is, I agree with him 100% the way, you know, if you owe the bank $1,000, you have a problem. If you owe the bank $100 million, the bank has a problem. And with very few approved housing elements, I think that we have to look very carefully at where, what is the purpose of these delayed approvals? Because, you know, at first glance, HCD has a problem. But I also want to recognize that this is where HCD has substantial leverage, right, in the process? Because enforcement of the housing elements is a lot more difficult than providing approval upfront. I think we should acknowledge that relative to the work that we're doing because it is vital that we, that we get that compliance. Because I think the consequences, especially for a community like ours in the situation that we're in, with the way our land is used, it's vital that we, we achieve compliance in a thoughtful way. Because the loss of local control could be significant. The second piece is somewhat in distinction to that and sets up some of my thinking about how I went into this work with, with, with my colleagues. I want to say, and I've said this to staff before in private, I want to say it here, I am very concerned that within the context of our 8.3 square miles and the way our land is currently used, we are between a rock and a hard place when it comes to meeting the capacity requirements of the element and the fair housing requirements of the element. I think if we focus, I think we, we have a very, very difficult needle to thread in terms of making sure that our capacity adjustments don't take, you know, don't create a fair housing problem. And that if we advance the fair housing issue, that we then don't end up with a capacity problem. And I, and I, and I really hope that in the conversations with HCD, staff will put that front and center so that we have very clear guidance from HCD about which is the priority. Because I don't think, I don't think we can hit both of them perfectly. I'm, I'm actually, you know, I'm quite concerned about that. And then, and then the third thing to acknowledge about the letter is that, as much as it, as much as it feels like a decline to certify, right, as a rejection, it struck me that there were a number of pieces of the letter that reflected a desire for us to show our work a little bit more clearly, maybe to bring some things out of the appendix into the element and potentially to really expand conversations about new laws that were not yet enacted at the time that we submitted our, our, our element. So SB 9, SB 478, SB 8, there are a number of, there are a number of laws that are now on the books where implementation of those laws could be a strong indicator of our, of our intention to fulfill both the letter and the spirit of the housing element laws. And I just want to acknowledge that and recognize that, that there may be some work that staff, our hardworking staff has already done, they should get credit for in this revised. So that having been said, I'd love to, if I can, turn it back over to Commissioner Fresco. Because my sense is that our work together was really designed to, you know, having cleared that, sort of cleared that understanding of the letter, okay, what are then the steps that we could take to achieve the capacity responsibly in a way that minimizes its impact on fair housing? So, because both of those are, you know, really important to us. So I see, we'll stop talking.
Before we go on, I do want to talk about community or public input in this call, for our, this agenda item. And we need to, we need to weave that in. And I suggest we do that sooner rather than later, if it's okay with folks. And if it is, I would ask, I would ask Melissa to put up the caller, caller queue now. Let's have, let's, let's have a little more discussion. Jing, looks like she wants to say something. Maybe we can see if we get a couple of callers before we go too far into our discussion.
Yeah, actually, I was just jumping in to say that we do have one caller on the line, it looks like. And I think, yeah, Melissa's got the slide up, so maybe we give it a few moments. And because usually you have wanted to take the public comment before you delve into your discussion.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry that I allowed us to go in a different direction. So do we want to, let's, we need to let that minute, minute go? Or do we want to hear that caller? I mean, let's go ahead and have that caller speak while we're letting the minute.
Okay, I will welcome our first caller, only caller so far, into the meeting. And hello there, you are now live in the meeting and you are off mute. Please state your name clearly for the record and you have three minutes for your statement.
Hi, Commissioner, this is Dave Rand. What arm, Richard Goldsmith in Delve. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, just a couple of thoughts. I read the HCD letter similar to you, Commissioner Fondabarnardi. The level of complexity that they're requiring seems pretty unbelievable. That being said, I think there are some low hanging fruit opportunities. One of the clear directives was to provide more specificity as to the upzoning and the standards that are proposed to be changed. As you recall, the commission and the council voted to not include the specific heights and FARs in the housing element. I think in two, after two successive HCD letters directing the city to include that specificity, now is the time to import that information back into the document. You can still include your caveat that you have the ability, you, the city, to modulate things up and down as long as you achieve the same level of projected zone capacity. But I think that detail really should be in to be responsive to the HCD letter. Want to commend Commissioners Fresco, Landris, and Lambert's manifesto on the housing element. I think there's a lot of really good and thoughtful, insightful stuff in there. Particularly the notion about injecting new development potential into the Bergamot area. I was a little confused, though, by the sort of locational suggestions. My recommendation would be to upzone the entire MUC area. There are a number of large parcels that are owned by property owners interested in doing new projects in the MUC. A lot of those projects haven't gone forward because of the more restrictive standards that have been in place for years now. But to the extent that you see that area of the city as an opportunity for new development, I think you will get the project. I think it was Commissioner Raskin at a prior hearing, he said, that's the area where you should go crazy. It's got transit, large sites, the neighbors are not there. And, and, and property owners actually interested in doing development. All those things are true. And I don't see a reason why you would want to eliminate good housing opportunities in the MUC. Carve out the conservation areas, which are already designated. But the MUC, I would hope if you decide to upzone that area, that that would be a focus. Thank you very much. Look forward to hearing the rest of your discussions, Stephen.
Don't leave. I think we have a question for you, Mr. Rand, Commissioner Landers.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Rand. We actually had had in our, when we were having the red line conversation and I, and I sort of to our memo, but also where we are, we had looked at some detail at a map of the, of the Bergamot area. And we, we had some concerns that there are some existing housing there that we do not want to displace. And it would be, it would, not only do we not want to do it, it, we, we, it would be difficult to do so under SB 8, and rightly so. Do you have more specificity about the locations that we're talking about? Because I think we were looking at that, that northern part or north, northeastern part of, of the Bergamot area. And Commissioner Fresco may have more specificity in that, in framing the question.
Yeah, appreciate that. I mean, I'm not here to talk about any specific properties or projects. But I will tell you, if you're looking, you're asking me for more fine grained suggestions within the MUC area, I would look particularly at the area bounded by Olympic, Nebraska, and Stewart. That's a large swath of sites, but that, I can tell you, there are multiple different property owners within that quadrant that have talked about building housing at those sites in the past, the varying degrees of, of effort put in. But there are interested potential housing projects that could come out of that area if you unlock the development potential.
And assuming that we do not have to put in, what was it, 294 underground parking places, mere steps away from a metro stop? We had wondered in our previous conversation, which is why I'm getting specific, about the SSI relative to the, let's say, the triangle described by Sentinel and Nebraska and Olympic. We were a little bit more wary of whether or not that was actually susceptible to housing. Whereas the square between Nebraska and Colorado, bounded by Stewart and Stanford, where we've already approved some housing projects leading to potentially the creation of a new, you know, the extension of Pennsylvania Avenue. Our sense from our previous conversation was that that was a more likely location. Do you, does that read you?
I think both, and I misspoke, I'm sorry. I didn't mean, I meant Olympic, Sentinel, Nebraska, and Stewart. That's a larger area. And they're not, to my knowledge, that's not an area where you have existing residential. I certainly wouldn't be suggesting that, that you look at displacing existing residents. But that's a larger area and there's no proposals in part of that area. But I, I can tell you, there's a property owner with a very large, a large project that's never proposed anything formally, excuse me, a large site, that's interested in doing housing, but hasn't done anything about it because the standards haven't worked and they just haven't advanced it. But that's a, that's a commercial property, a very large site. It's a very interesting opportunity. So that, that larger area is, I think, really ripe. I think the other area, maybe two, Commissioner, you know, particularly, you've got the, the MVD project, the Prior Village Trailer Park that's obviously built out. You've got the Jack Walter Office Project, but then you've got that project in the middle that has gone nowhere. And that's another opportunity there as well. I'm not sure exactly where that falls in your geography. I don't have a map in front of me. But the point being, I think you could get into trouble if you start sort of selecting islands of areas within the MUC. I would really recommend upzone the MUC, take the conservation areas off the table. And then, you know, if there is existing housing there, you're exactly right. SB 330, SB 8 are going to preclude redevelopment of that anyways. And I don't think you're going to see those, those properties necessarily turn over. But I think you'd be missing opportunities if you try to be too surgical here when it comes to that MUC area of Bergamot.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions for the caller? Not seen any, well, thank you very much, Mr. Rand, for your comments tonight. Staff, did we pick up a dozen more callers or so?
Just two. But we will take our next one right now.
Thank you.
And hello to our newest caller. You are now live in the meeting. You have three minutes for your statement and please state your name clearly.
Hi, this is Danielle Charnian. I don't know how much the effect this could have on anything, but I see multi-unit buildings all over the place for sale. And they're all, if you boil it down to per unit, they are one, two, and three bedroom units. And the highest that they would break down to would be 600, which is still under seven, which is what it seems to cost CCSM to build. But lots of them would come out to 300 to 400 per unit. And the good part to me is that they exist, they're nice, they hold on to our old beach landscape, and they're immediate. And, you know, maybe would just, some of them look like they don't need any work and some might need some work, but, but they're there. And they're, they're much cheaper than building and they do keep our, our landscape. And if we started just buying all of those up, I, I don't understand why we're not doing that. Could I find, get an answer to that? Because I would be doing that tomorrow.
Well, sir, we will, we will talk about that in part of our discussion, but this is not a question and answer session with the public right now. With that said, Commissioner Raskin might have a question for you, which might illuminate an answer from us.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm a little confused. I thought this was public comment and the previous person brought up an idea for a certain area to build with, how, so how is this different? And I'm confused.
Because, because the commissioner asked him and got into a specific back and forth. Now, again, Commissioner Raskin might have a question for you where he's trying to address that question. But let me, let me get his question out.
I do, yeah. Thank you very much for bringing up the issue of adaptive reuse. And I'm curious if you're referring specifically to underutilized residential, commercial, or potential or potentially both?
Well, at the moment, I just see residential, especially in my area of Ocean Park. There's just tons of them for sale. All of a sudden, there's lots and lots of them. But it's something I've thought all along, is why don't we do that? I think CCSM has, in the past, purchased some existing buildings. I know of one on Idaho, they purchased of studios. And it just seems like such a great win all around because it's cheaper, it's quicker, and it retains our beach landscape. So I'm really referring now to just apartments. I mean, maybe other things can, I'm all for repurposing, rehab, and all of it. I'm not for any of what's going on at all to our city with all this building. I think it's horrible, and I wish we'd stand up to SCAG and refuse. But it seems to me crazy that we're not taking advantage of what already exists and forcing new building on everything. So apartments.
I think we have another, we have another question for you. Please, Commissioner Fondabarnardi.
Yeah, I think your comment is well placed. Unfortunately, what seems to be happening, if I take a unit that's already built, and I move it out of the market rate universe, and I put it in the affordable housing universe, like if this was bought by a nonprofit housing provider, I don't think that adds a unit to RENA. RENA is only interested in new units, if I understand them correctly, with all their crazy laws. You only get a credit if you build a new unit, not if you move an existing unit from one category to another, even though that second category is much more desirable than the category it's in now.
Mr. Pernari, I'm curious. To me, that sounds like extortion on their part, and should be questioned and stood up to, because it's destroying our landscape, and it seems that it's just putting money in the pockets of people like abundant. And it just, it seems so wrong, all of it, that it's beyond me why the 190 cities are not banding together to refuse and to force people to go back to the drawing board, and just to say, "Forget it." You know, "We're not going to do this." And it, I mean, we're a very small city here, and I just drove up and down Lincoln. And, I mean, it's frightening. It's really frightening, you know, and then I had to circle around to where the NMS WS deal is going to be, and then the Wilshire deal, and then they're going to put the affordable housing off-site, even though we preach diversity. And it just, it just doesn't seem right. So why can't it be questioned that these units would be considered and would count towards our situation? Also, in general, why don't we do more of that to begin with?
Okay, we have another question. Commissioner Landers?
And, sir, I'm sorry, I just respectfully, your public comment time, I think, if you could keep your answers a little bit shorter. We just need to be respectful of other callers in time. But I want to know if you are aware, and I also, I guess, want to know if my colleague, Commissioner Fondabarnardi, is aware, AB 787, which was enacted last year, which actually allows cities to get up to 25% of their RENA credited through acquisition and rehabilitation and dedication to affordable, deep restricted to affordable, of precisely the type of units that you are describing. I just want to know if you are aware of that and would point you to the memo that I wrote along with Commissioner Fresco and Commissioner Lambert, and whether or not you are also, in fact, aware that there is additional legislation pending in the Assembly this year to expand that process, make it even easier for whole buildings and units to be acquired for that purpose to count towards the RENA? I just wanted to know if you're aware of that.
I've heard something about it, but not in detail, no.
Okay, I'd encourage you to look it up. It's very helpful, and it goes to your point, precisely.
Given the.
Exactly where is it, Sean, on the Santa Monica Forward site with all the action letters?
I don't know what's on that site, but you could go to.
A lot of action letters to cover the town in all of this.
No, I have, I don't know what's on their site. But AB 787, you can look it up. Just Google AB 787 California Legislature. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for the caller? If not, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. And the next caller?
All right. Our next caller has now been unmuted and is live in the meeting. Hello there. Please state your name clearly for the record, and you have three minutes.
Oh, hi, I'm Robert Machio.
Hello, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Oh, thank you so much. Well, thank you for taking my call. I'm a first-time caller, so please park my ignorance about your process here. I'm also wazzing you on a time delay, so I've got to turn that off and just talk.
Yep, we appreciate.
I have a couple of quick questions. Thank you. I have a couple of quick questions for you, and I'll do the best I can here. The Santa Monica Airport, scheduled to be closed perhaps in about six years, is about 225 acres of land there. Have you considered doing any plan, any, any building there to accommodate future residents as opposed to disrupting current residents? The first general sort of question I have for you guys. The second thing is, building housing behind Main Street in Ocean Park seems to be an issue that comes up every 20 to 30 to 40 years. Is there a notification process for people who live at the sea colony, the shores, who live in Ocean Park, so that people are aware that this is happening? It seems to me that this fight is something that happens every few generations. The idea of living on Main Street in the shadow of sort of affordable income housing is less than desirable, and I was curious if you'd have some thoughts on that. The other thing is, there are many municipalities that are in violations of a state mandate. And it seems like Santa Monica is always the best student in the class, trying to accommodate as best we can. And just curious what the pushback can be from the city to advocate for current residents as opposed to future residents. Some thoughts that I wanted to share with you.
Great. We appreciate that. Commissioners, do we have any questions of the commenter? Not seeing any questions right now, so we thank you very much, and we'll, most of those items will get discussed as part of our future discussions on this element, housing element, and have been discussed in the past as well. Do we have any other? Do we have any other speakers?
Not currently. That was our last one.
Okay. A little unfortunate, we have such an important issue, and so little public participation. But maybe we go back in, in live meetings, that'll change a little bit. Okay, Commissioner, so we're back at the subject at hand, and I think where we were at was Commissioner Landers was handing this off to Commissioner Fresco to talk a little bit more about their framing their letter for us.
Excuse me, sorry. Let me just organize my, I can see you and the letter at the same time. Sorry.
All right.
Okay, so, like I said, we started out by just creating a table and being what we thought was going to satisfy the comments in the original letter, fully aware that we have never personally spoken to HCD the way staff does, and don't know what they're thinking. I personally have not read 185 rejection letters, and I'm sure staff probably has. So, you know, we are coming more from just our own visions of the city. You know, Don brings an encyclopedic knowledge of every state bill that comes and is coming and has come, and is, you know, and, you know, Leslie is very, you know, she worked in affordable housing production and has a really strong sense of feasibility, and I'm more of a person who's very aware of what's on the ground now and how the city was built and what it is made up of today. So between the three of us, we kind of went through all of these different things, and we found that, to a lot of the answer, we're like, "Oh, yeah, that goes back to the constraints." Or, "Oh, yeah, that goes back to where we want to upzone, and that goes back to the city-owned sites." And so we kind of all went off into our corners and did some analysis, and then we actually got together in person. It was really exciting. And I made them scones. And then, so we, that's kind of how we got here to a letter like this as opposed to really addressing the HCD letter. And so the main thing, which we kind of tried to get into in the, in the little introduction, is that for us, all three of us, the real priorities were finding a place to put capacity, enough capacity to meet the RENA, in theory at least, without displacing people and without, you know, and keeping it fair and not putting all the new housing next to the freeway, although that was one area where we didn't have complete consensus in terms of the IC. But, you know, so, but those were our main priorities going through. And rather than go through all of the nitpicks, we felt that if we, I shouldn't say nitpicks, maybe they're in the letter, to focus on the broad strokes of what we would actually just do to meet the RENA, and then analyze it and explain it to satisfy the letter. Because for us, the RENA was more important than the background information that they felt they needed, the proofs, you know. So we kind of decided or agreed that when, the places where we decide to upzone is going to create an incentive that would not only lead to larger projects, which would get us closer in bigger chunks, but would also create more suitable sites and more likelihood for movement and change. I mean, even Dave Rand said that in his public comment earlier in this meeting. You know, we create opportunity when we add upzoning. So these, the main places that we proposed upzoning or, you know, increasing density were places that we've already talked about at previous meetings, which are areas and boulevards that are primarily a single-story residential. There's nobody living there right now. The way the zoning is now, the incentive is really working towards getting us more commercial, and we feel if we upzoned, we could flip it and perhaps get people more interested in housing, and if it's upzoned, even people who weren't as interested in developing before might start thinking about it. So that was kind of the idea with the boulevards. And we looked into some of the more fine-grain, and we noted that, you know, in our two, in our three, in our four parcels, there's like a unit cap, it's like this many square feet per unit, or a maximum of four units. And so just putting that four-unit cap, if the site is big enough, we should let them go to the zone potential. And little things like that might be really helpful, too, in keeping extra units. So that, the height and the density recommendations were based basically on that. So then, I'm just. All right. So then we moved on to a slightly more catch-all section, changes to increase the speed and likelihood of development of affordable housing on city-owned properties, which just really means that we need to get really organized and serious about those city-owned properties. We did do a little bit of analysis, and they all have issues. You know, none of them are just like ready to go. There's things going on, there's disputes, there's lawsuits, there's pre-existing conditions that need to be met, there's tenants, there's just a lot of crazy stuff going on on those lots. And of course, some of them are those multi-generational Main Street lots, which I can assure you have been in dispute since 1892. So that is a real thing, and that is, that they are pretty incredible in their own right, just for that. So we just really need to get organized about that, figure out how we're going to solve those problems, and show, make sure they are solvable before we promise too much about them and so forth. Then the last thing about, oh, constraints was a really big thing. We've had a lot of public comment to this commission over this whole process, that we've just been cataloging and saving on our computers from various people. And so we just tried to combine them all here in a list. And then this, and then after going through it, some of the, we made an appendix of restraints, which basically repeats a lot of the constraints in the section, in section three, but also refers to some of the zoning things that are also constraints, and kind of sums it all up. So is that a good enough summary for you?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's very helpful. Appreciate, appreciate all the work you guys put into it. Commissioner Landers?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to throw in a couple of comments because of some additional things that, since Leslie's not here, in fairness, I know that, we know that she wanted to add, and I just want to make sure that they get into the mix for the, for the record. She, we said sort of gently, for example, that we really want to revisit the high-rise definition of 55 feet, and she actually went back and did the research and found when precisely the council had adopted the high-rise definition and the findings that it had made at the time. And so I know that she had wanted to recommend very specifically that staff review those findings and see if they are still findable later. Like, it's, we understand that there are concerns, we understand that there are seismic concerns, which I share. It's a matter of kind of doing the work on that potential constraint to, to support it. And I am also looking at the notes that she, that she shared with us. She also has, did want to note that she, you know, she disagreed on the IC. And, and of course, Commissioner Fresco wanted to go a little bit higher on neighborhood village than Leslie and I wanted to go. But I hope that she'll have an opportunity to make some, make some additional comments, maybe at another meeting. I'm really sorry that he has the dog issue, and hope the dog is okay.
I'm sure she'll, I'm sure we'll have one or two more, two more meetings where she'll be able to comment.
Yeah, but she did, that was an important point that she wanted to make, which is that these constraints that we have in place may in fact be generally, more generally, may be based on findings. And we, given the way that HCD has framed both its letter to us, and I don't know, I've seen the letter that HCD sent to Pasadena rejecting its revision, we really have to make sure that our, that our findings are defensible. And, and I know that that represents more work for staff, but we want to, we want to be able to defend where we are. And if we can't defend it, we probably need to find a way to revise it. So that's all I wanted to add.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Raskin and Fondabarnardi. On us, now if we have any questions that we want to, Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, you know, first and foremost, thank you for, you know, taking the time to move this ball forward. I think we all share the perspective that we're aware of the dire con. I, I think we all share the perspective that we're aware of the dire consequences of reducing a compliant housing element and that we want to make sure that this can all move forward as quickly as possible. And I, I share the sentiment that, you know, I for one am willing to meet as frequently as necessary to make this happen. And I'll just throw it out there that, you know, perhaps we should consider whether there's any value in holding joint planning commission and city council meetings just for the sake of efficiently moving through the process. I can only imagine how messy that would be, but we're under a real time crunch, so perhaps something to consider. I know it's been done before. You know, I think that when we were doing the red lines last month, you know, we had a pretty nuanced and pretty consensus-driven approach towards preserving areas like Main Street, Pico, Montana, that are especially susceptible gentrification and, and, you know, Commissioner Fundamentari, I think, you, you at one point had like one or two moments of, or one or two minutes of, of really insightful policy discussion about why it's so important to just, just not paint with broad brushstrokes here when rezoning. And I think that that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that that discussion that we had has really informed how we can move forward effectively with the housing element process in a way that really identifies very specifically where it's appropriate to concentrate new developments in a way that could potentially alleviate some of the concerns from, from HCD. You know, I, I do want to get into the nuts and bolts of some of the specific items that you've, you know, listed in your, in your letter, but, you know, since we're at a fairly high level of discussion, you know, I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole. But, you know, again, I do want to emphasize that time is of the essence. I hope we can move forward collaboratively with as many meetings as we need as quickly as possible.
Well, Commissioner Raskin, I, you know, we do have an open evening tonight. If you want to dig into some of those questions, I would urge you to do it if, you know, efficiently, but I would urge you to do it. With that said, you can consider that because it looks like Commissioner Fundamentari has something he would like to say, so I'm going to turn to him really quickly.
Yeah, just as a, as a process thing, I'm wondering if we don't go through the document, the document is very well-written. Thank you for the, the team that put it together and just look and almost do a little straw vote or discuss each one as we come up. And I might suggest that we omit the first two because we're going to be discussing the R1 later in, in our ROI debate. And so maybe we can parcel that out, but keep going with the rest of the document. The two, first two are A1 and A2, and then keep going from there.
So I just want to remind the commission of what your agenda item reads. So it's a discussion impossible direction. So to the extent you take any straw polls, it would fall under that direction provision in.
Well, I think that straw polls for this would certainly be helpful to staff when they're having discussions with HCD about what it all means to actually know what kinds of things the planning commission is amenable to, at least at this point, before we know more.
Yeah, I, I, you know, if I can jump in, like to, to your point, Commissioner, about skipping A1 and 2, I, I think that A2, you know, essentially is implement SB9. A1 is a slightly different question, which I would welcome a straw poll on because what we were exploring was, and we talked about this in our SB9 discussion, given the explicit instruction from HCD in the letter to do more in R1, would this be a way to do that? And I would argue in lieu of staff's straight-up upzoning proposal that both we and council elected not to include last October. In other words, I think that, I would like to make the case to HCD, I'll just say it out loud, I'd like to make the case to HCD that we're just a little bit more open to creative lot-splitting in R1, in the, in specifically the areas, I believe they were called racially concentrated wealth in the, in the, in the housing element report, where we would say do both and, allow both the lot splits and the, and the ADU splits, but not permitted anywhere else. And I think it would be interesting to get a sense of where we are on that. It would be a fair housing play along with a, you know, slight densification play, but only on lots that are large enough to absorb them. And it would really be, it's, I mean, I want to stress, we really tried to be responsive to the HCD letter. This was not like, oh, cool, let's go densify. It was like, what are the things that we could do that would actually be responsive to what HCD is asking us to do? And can we draw the line from A to B?
Right. Well, I mean, I appreciate you guys trying to attack that because that is, that is a really perplexing issue of how we're going to address those areas of historic concentration of wealth or however you want to term it. And, and I'm afraid that they're leading us down this path of, of densifying those areas, which I think as we all voted on before is, is a mistake. So we need to find these kind of creative, creative paths within there. And, you know, HCD had some very specific questions to us about our ADU. I mean, they seemed to think that we had a good program there, but they did not quite, they, they had a real problem with our, our numbers. And I, and I would just, you know, it just seems to me, the numbers are the numbers. It's not that hard to prove to them whether we're right in this situation. And I'm, I'm assuming that, I'm a little off tangent here, but I'm assuming that staff is working on preparing those numbers so we can just show that empirical evidence because we really need to find the solution to the R1 zone without upzoning everything. And I'm hoping that, you know, showing implementation of SB9 helps us get us, get us down that path. But really what you're suggesting here is only in North of Montana where we have lots over X square foot that we'd be able to do this. Other areas where we, where we historically have smaller lots, we kind of draw the line and say this, this is not appropriate.
Also, the other areas where there's smaller lots, they're, they tend to be areas where there's more R2 mixed in than you realize.
Right, there's already higher density.
R2, but it's old multifamily that has already been there.
And since we've, we've kind of started discussing these two, I had a question when you, when you were talking about in number two, when you're talking about exceptions are permitted, ensure that by right exceptions are permitted. So what you're saying there is, is we're deviate, we have to allow deviations from the current zoning code to make sure that we're getting appropriately sized square-foot buildings as opposed to very tiny units in those areas.
Right. And it goes to, it goes to what Commissioner Raskin was asking during the ROI, which is, are we actually doing the work in the other parts of the zoning code to make sure that SB9 is meaningfully implemented? Because again, what I, what I would expect, we've already seen it, right? We saw it with Woodside trying to claim that they were exempt from SB9 because of mountain lions. I mean, I, I want to protect mountain lions, I really do. But HCD is going to be taking a sharp look at our implementation of SB9. And so one of the, again, one of the things that I would argue is if we can come back into revised housing element, saying we are implementing SB9 in a very real way and look at the three, you know, here are the five things we did to make it really meaningful, that would be responsive to both the capacity issues that they're raising, but also, and more importantly, the fair housing issues that they're raising. And we'd be doing it in a way that precisely would not impinge on Pico or other neighborhoods that are susceptible to gentrification, right? Because we, we in fact said in C1, hey, let's not upzone Main Street, let's not upzone Pico, let's not upzone these areas precisely because they're homes to vulnerable, you know, vulnerable tenancies and vulnerable local businesses. So this is a way of, it's, it's kind of taking a scalpel and saying, can we weigh out the one against the other?
Commissioner Fundamentari?
So are we saying that now we are discussing item A1 and A2? Are we in that or?
We're there. We are there.
Well then, I think the discussion should cover a couple of things. One is, what is the minimum size that when you do split a lot, what is the minimum size of lot you have left so that in fact you can do both the new single-family residence and the ADU? I think that should be a number. It shouldn't be something, oh, it's a big lot, a little lot. It should be a specific number that you get that right. The other thing I would like to add is that, you know, let's be honest, one of the big disasters that are coming our way when we start chopping up the R1 area is we're going to lose a lot of trees. So my thought would be that if you are going to say, you can do it, and let's, we'll pick a number, let's say if your lot is 5,000, you can put in the new, new single-family residence and an ADU, but you can't cut down any trees greater than X. And the discussion should be how big is X? You know, how big is the tree we're trying to preserve? And the last thing I'd like to add is there should be some parking constraint for chopping up. If you want to add the ADU, you have to be able to provide at least two parking spaces for that combination of the single-family residence and the ADU. So the minimum size, the tree and the parking are the requirements I would have that are measurable and actionable and, and valuable to a plan checker. So did they meet this? Okay, good, good, good. Otherwise, we're going to be in the kind of, you know, I want to do this and, you know, I don't care what you say situation. So I think we need measurable things like that. And I'm putting those out for discussion.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, just to weigh, weigh in on this quickly, I, I absolutely agree with Commissioner Fundamentari said about, thinking holistically about the broad scope of potential impacts here, including impacts to trees. I, I continue to be skeptical that ADUs are going to make a measurable difference in, in our housing protection goals. I think that they're largely going to be used for, for non-housing purposes. I'm hopeful that they will be used for housing, but I'm, you know, realistically pessimistic that they will be. And, you know, I think in order for this to be a meaningfully successful strategy, you have to include some sort of portability requirements or some sort of other measure that ensures that, you know, the duplexes and, and ADUs are actually rented out to, to folks and not used just as extra force space for bigger homes. Those are, those are my thoughts.
Well, Commissioner Fundamentari, you're, you're calling for specifics. I, I think that, I think most people would support you on that. I'm not really in a position where I could give you specifics, but I think that would be something that we would urge, we would urge staff to come up with unless you have suggestions at this point.
Well, like I, like I said, two parking spaces would be the minimum and, and then the preservation of the trees. And again, I would choose a standard like a tree no bigger, you can't cut down any trees bigger than three inches in diameter, you know, at the chest height where you measure tree sizes typically. That would be, that would be a standard and I would like to hear other people's input. The reason I'm, I'm raising this is that I agree with Commissioner Raskin is that we are not going to get a lot of affordable housing out of these ADUs. And, you know, but we are going to have all these sort of, kind of nuanced things that even if someone is using a, an ADU as their home office, let's say hypothetically, that means somewhere else home off, a, a commercial office and not being rented. And eventually where we're really trying to get to is adaptive reuse of all those vacant retail space and vacant office spaces. So there are some benefits to, to even not using these ADUs for directly affordable housing, which is really what we're trying to get to. But it still does help the housing mix and the overall fabric of the city because we don't have to tear down as many buildings to do these things if people have in fact their home offices. And then the other, you know, let's say the other virtue of home offices is they do objectively cut down commuting. And that's something we're also trying to get to. We're trying to get to the place where you can walk to work. Well, those people who can work, let's say electronically, or run a business from their so-called garage ADU, that's, that's a virtue, that's a value, that's what we're trying to get to. So what I'm saying is that I agree that we're not going to get a lot of totally affordable units, but we're going to get a lot of secondary benefits that are very valuable.
Commissioner Landers?
Just wanted to make a suggestion for the sake of, for the sake of having, getting through the document. We wrote this understanding that staff would need to go back and study all of these things. And certainly I am interested in standards as well, which we'd need to study in light of, you know, we have to look at, for example, the two parking spaces, yes, but we have to look at how far we are from transit relative to SB330 and SB8. It's complicated in terms of the implementation standards. SB9 also puts some constraints. What I would suggest is that, like, we think of this as sort of an ROI and vote not in the sense of, yes, we want to do this right now as written, but rather, yes, we want a staff to study this seriously and bring us back a considered proposal based on the language in the memo, right? Like not, so, because otherwise I think we're going to be here all night as if we were redlining each of our ideas. That's all. So it sounds like we're all comfortable studying this further, provided that we can forget the standards and the tree protections in place.
Or any other appropriate standards.
Again, consistent with the law, yeah, exactly.
So we'll try to keep, try to keep it as high-level as possible and give a nod of things that we're all supportive of.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so then with that, unless anybody has more comments on 1A, 1 and 2, you know, I'm going to just kick, go down to 3 and I'm supportive of removing the caps. I think that's kind of a no, a no-brainer.
We already discussed that, it's a no-brainer.
Yep. Yes, can I just add one? I know it's a no-brainer, but I want to be very specific for people who are listening because I know this is a sensitive subject. And in fact, I learned in our discussions that these caps were brought in many, many years ago as a housing protection move, so I want to name that. Santa Monica, what has been at the forefront of affordable housing and tenant protection for many, many years in the absence of significant action by the state. And we've been very proud of that and I think we should be proud of that. Where we find ourselves now, and again, it's in that threading of the needle with HCD, is that the state has started to really catch up on protecting tenants from displacement, from rent increases, you know, or unreasonable rent increases, that sort of thing. And so I want to be really, really clear here, we are not proposing to remove unit density caps on properties that would not have state protection, right? What we're saying is remove the unit density caps, caps on the parcels that are already within the SB330, SB8 tenant protection world and not outside that because we don't want to, we don't want to create, staff's objection to our proposal in October was that it could unintentionally lead to displacement. And I think what we're saying is, again, in trying to thread the needle, okay, so then let's only do it in places where there are statewide and citywide anti-displacement protections.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, I'll just say that I'm the dissenting voice here on this issue. I, I, I think that we have to be very careful about removing density caps because it, you know, Commissioner Landers, I, I agree with you that, that the state has come a great way in terms of, of legislating protections for, basically just described, but there are many secondary pressures and indirect impacts that come about through the implementation of, you know, programs that remove density caps that need to be addressed very carefully. Not saying it can't be done, but, you know, this is a much more complicated issue than it might seem at first flush.
Oh, hold on a second.
Can I just clarify something for Ellis? We're not saying remove all density caps, this is just where you have a 7,500 square-foot parcel and it says you can have, you know, 2,000 square feet of parcel area per unit, but not to exceed four units. And we just want to take out the not to exceed four units. And we just want to take out the not to exceed four units. We're still going to keep the density as it is. We're not going to change the density. And so is that big a deal? It just, anyway.
I, I, I hear you and, you know, it's a real problem for, for places like the parking lots behind Pico Delany that are, uh, vastly underutilized sites, but, um, you know, I, I'm really fearful of the unintended consequences here and, um, but I, I, I hear you.
Jing, I think, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. Jing, if you want to comment?
Yeah, um, because this is obviously something that we've talked about previously. I just want to make sure I do clearly understand what is being kind of discussed. And I think you, you've heard clearly our, our signif- very, very significant concerns about this. I think first of all is that, you know, is the goal, um, the intent to look for capacity in our multi-unit residential neighborhoods? I think we share that, you know, as, as staff, we don't believe that is necessary to be going there, um, because we can accommodate that capacity in, you know, all of our commercial areas. Um, and, you know, as I hear you speaking about the protections in SB 330 and SB 8 and, and density bonus law and what have you, um, you know, one of the things that comes to mind, and maybe I'll just use a concrete example as kind of, you know, part of why we are feeling this concern, uh, because I'm, I'm not sure how we would implement kind of some of the ideas that I hear being discussed. Um, you know, just for example, we have, we have sites and we have to look at this, you know, where we have buildings that are over the density, you know, as of today, or maybe they're even larger sites. And, you know, the density caps behave in a way to ensure that we do not displace our existing residents. This has been a running theme in all of the land use plans, um, you know, that the city has, has worked on at least, you know, since I've been with the city, but it's certainly, um, you know, part of the culture and the threat of, you know, how we, how we approach housing in Santa Monica is it's not just about the fact that, you know, if the units are displaced, they are replaced by something else. It's the fact that we, we will have lost the people that are in them. And I think there's a strong body of evidence that shows that once they're displaced, they don't return. Um, and the density caps, you know, are, are a way to allay that. So I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what exactly is being discussed because I'm not sure we're, we're understanding how surgical it is and then how that would even work in practice.
Okay, hold, okay. Hold on, Sean, Sean, hold on a second. Mr. Fundar's hand was up first. I know you want to respond to that and I'm going to get to you, but Mr. Fundar.
Uh, Jin, are you actually saying, and I, I want to get this clearly, that you feel we can meet, meet arena numbers without touching the R2, R3, R4? Is that, is that your understanding and you, you have a great deal of confidence?
I, I, I mean, I think that, that, I will say this, like they, they have, there are a lot of existing units in there. And so, you know, there is a natural tension here in terms of, you know, when we're looking for capacity in the neighborhoods that the preservation of units is as much a fair housing strategy as it is in producing it in the right places, right? So even when we've looked at expanding the footprint of where housing is occurring, um, you know, we've looked at commercial areas largely because those are areas where you're not going to immediately displace existing residents. I don't even know how I would select an SSI site, um, in the multi-unit residential neighborhoods, you know, because, because we have so many ironclad productions, it's layer upon layer, and it's intentional. I mean, it is absolutely intentional because, you know, this loss of rent control housing is a major, major concern, um, in this city, you know? So I, I, I just, I, I'm only kind of raising, because I, I'm not sure I'm really understanding why there can, why there's pursuit of this, you know, and, and what the policy goal is.
So, so I can speak to that. So first of all, the reason that we wrote it the way that we did is because we believe that the state protections actually make displacement in those neighborhoods infeasible, right? They make them, if we're going to use a measure of feasibility, then the feasibility question has to be, is building feasible? And also what, what, at what point does displacement, um, discourage, uh, discourage the redevelopment? So the, the, the underlying argument, and again, it requires further study, is that, is that the state displacement protections will move developers away from those areas because they don't want to spend the money to deal with having to replace the units and compensate the tenants and all of those different pieces. We don't want to lose the people who are here. That is not the point. We actually believe that they won't be lost. The issue is the combination of our unit density, of our density and our unit density caps and the density limits are being removed by SB 478, which is the next item on our list, is that the density caps yield two things. They, they yield these vesting tentative tract maps that we do all the time for large triplex condos that are affordable to nobody living in those neighborhoods as opposed to l- larger types of apartment complexes or smaller condos that might be affordable to more people. So one thing is, I think by having the caps in place, what we're saying is the only new housing we're going to produce in our multifamily neighborhoods is for really, really, really rich people, which does nothing for our fair housing goals. And that leads me to the second point, which is I hear you saying that we can meet our, our housing goals on the boulevards. The problem is that both we and the city council went through a really detailed study of our fair housing and we both, I mean, both bodies, both the planning commission and the city council expressed extreme concern about loading up our housing, um, in significant heights at, at that, on, on, uh, in areas that were, um, already on the, you know, the wrong side of redlining or were, well, we're on the wrong side of redlining or segregation. So I think we're dealing with a kind of a paradox here. And from where I sit, I think there probably are some neighborhoods where, uh, judicious revision to the unit density cap, not, you know, some judicious revision would not only provide less unaffordable housing options for people in those neighborhoods, but would also mitigate the, um, the densities that are required to meet our housing element it on, in areas that are, that are, um, that are historically problematic in terms of, in terms of loading up housing. So I think we're, it's one of those questions where we're asking the balance question and I think some, you know, really targeted relaxation of the unit density caps, let us do it before the state does it for us in the next round of housing reform. I mean, let's figure it out ourselves. That's what I'm getting at. I'm not looking, I, I don't expect people to be displaced. That's why I, you know, that's why we thought about it this way.
So I guess like, I, I mean, I, I think for one thing to clarify, um, AV 478 or SB, sorry, I don't know AV or AV, but 478, um, it is actually not about density. It's about floor area. So just to be clear, it doesn't just remove density. It's, those are two very, very different concepts.
No, of course.
Yeah, so, so that, that's different and it's kind of written in an odd way, but of course we will implement state law in that regard. Um, but I think if, if I understand your concern is that, your concern is that the density caps are resulting in kind of like the three-year unit condo, because I think I've heard the commission speak about that before, the concern of underbuilding. I think that has been more the result actually of the HPP, you know, and it's, and it's threshold applicability, which of course we, we have discussed extensively about revising. Um, and, you know, we had even redlines that say that we're looking at increasing that. So, you know, does, does that, is that a better way? Because again, you know, you're, you're saying that, you know, and I agree, the state protections are meant to be anti-displacement. They were not meant to facilitate the turnover of housing. The point I am making is that by removing the caps, you know, we may inadvertently open a corridor, even if it's one parcel or two parcels. I think, you know, it has been the city's longstanding position that the loss of a rent control unit is a big deal, you know? And I think that is really where we're coming from as a staff, you know? If, and that's why I wanted to understand what the goal was because there may be other mechanisms, you know, that, that would be, that, that would get us to that place instead of discussing the density caps and, you know, kind of removing that longstanding protection in our, in our residential neighborhoods. Um, and, and I think the other point is state law, you know, SB 8, SB 330, they do expire in 2030. Um, there's no guarantee that they will continue, you know? So if we have those local protections and, you know, we don't have to remove them yet because thus far the legislation is, you know, says what it says, it doesn't just automatically remove them at the state level, that, you know, we sort of control our own destiny in that regard. So that's, you know, part of, but I, I appreciate you kind of talking through that. That's, that's very helpful in our understanding.
Okay, great. Well, uh, we appreciate that dialogue. It didn't, you guys who put this together didn't think that everything was going to stick, but we still, you still have some.
It looks like Mario had something on this as still.
Yeah, I, I was just totally second what Jing said there. The state is fickle. Today there are protections for tenants. Tomorrow there may not be protections for tenants. So it's our job to build those in, bake them into our cake regardless of what the state does. So I, I'd be inclined to agree. We don't want to create these unintended consequences.
Should we move on to the next, the next discussion? And I'm not sure there's any more about SB 470 or 78 at this point?
Yeah, it's, it's a done deal.
It's a done deal. It's mostly just saying to HCD, we're going to implement the law and making sure that's in the element.
Okay. And then we get into B, into the height districts. Um, you know, I'm not opposed to the height districts where you're proposing. I'm just curious where all your, where your numbers came from and how you guys came to the FARs and the heights.
Oh, I'm supposed to speak here? Uh, we were, uh, looking at boulevards that were largely commercial, that didn't have a residential, wide boulevards, boulevards that aren't in places that have historically been places of segregation and unfair housing. Um, and, uh, we, so those were the places that we proposed for upzoning. Um, and because it's not downtown, uh, and it is near its boulevards and there's certainly bus service, but it's not near the main transit, uh, we felt that 70 feet and not going the full, full 84 in these areas was sufficient to incentivize more property owners to turn over properties and create housing.
Okay. I, I think my question was more when you came up with like, I mean, we did this as a commission a couple of weeks ago where we started saying, we think this FAR works and this doesn't. But as we're doing that, we really hadn't been grounded in the, in the economics of it as much. And I'm curious if you guys referred back to something when you came back. Was this based on the economic studies we've seen from HRNA where we came up with these square footages or FARs and heights?
Well, that, the heights were, uh, you know, we started with, um, the minimum feasibilities what HRNA gave us, but minimum feasibility is not an incentive. That's just minimum feasibility. So we wanted to increase it in order to create an incentive to produce housing. And, uh, the FARs were basically taken from the zoning, I mean, yeah, the existing zoning element and what FARs were typically assigned to these heights because those were created with calculations that presumably allowed, uh, a maximum number of units, given the other, uh, building standards and development standards that we require in the city so that things are possible to do.
Okay.
So it had to do with physical feasibility, not financial feasibility.
We'll need a, we'll need a little both before we're done.
Well, we need to have all of this studied. We don't, we can't do that analysis.
Well, and there was another important function here, which is that this goes back to our whole argument over Main Street and the lots on Nielsen, which we're calling the Nielsen lots now because we don't want to imply anything about Main Street. But we, we gave this a lot of thought and we think that it is not basically appropriate, um, to revise the zoning for Main Street, Pico, Montana, the IC, although Leslie disagreed a little bit with that, um, and Ocean Park because although we do want to, we, we're going to, we want to permit housing citywide, you know, we do have some pretty historic neighborhoods. We have some neighborhoods that are really important, um, for, for, um, longstanding tenants who are at risk of gentrification, uh, just residential and, and we have, and we have neighborhoods that are at risk for significant commercial displacement. And so part of our conversation was, well, look, if we really want to preserve these neighborhoods, where are we going to put that capacity that is both appropriate, does not compound fair housing, um, and is, you know, feasible for the volume of housing that would be needed to make up for those, those, the absence of changes in those neighborhoods? So, um, that's another important part of why we proposed those areas, uh, is because we really want to preserve Pico and Main Street and Ocean Park and, and, um, Montana.
Okay. Commissioner Fundar, you have.
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, what, how you chose Broadway, uh, the question regarding Broadway is first of all, it's a major bike access, though to put 70-story buildings, 70-foot buildings on it, I'm just wondering how that's all going to work, given the, the hazards. Um, and, um, and I'm not sure, is, is Broadway a super wide building and how long does the MUBL extend? Does it extend the whole length of the boulevard or just certain sections of it? Can you give us a little background on Broadway?
Yeah, hold on. Let me get my diagram.
While Nina's looking it up, I'll just say more people, more bikes, more bike traffic. I mean, that's great. People, density is great for bike traffic.
If you've driven through Broadway today, it's a Johnny Pachinko thing. You know, you kind of weave in and out. The bikes are protected, but the cars are zooming and cutting and it's just a mess. So I, I just, I'm asking, will, will, do we have the capacity there for 70-foot buildings?
I like it. I'm just going to say, I love that circulation, but that's, that's amazing.
Yeah, it looks like, uh, the MUBL Broadway zone that we were proposing for increasing the height is between Lincoln and 23rd Street and, uh, east of 20, I think that's 23rd Street. The map I'm looking at doesn't have street names on it. Um, but, uh, east of 23rd Street is R2, so we're not proposing any change there for Broadway.
It's east of Centinela, I believe. It kicks into residential.
Yeah. It's also, uh...
Not Centinela.
It's also that Broadway, particularly the center portion, is somewhat of a historical black neighborhood. So I'm just asking the question, is this where we want to drop the skyscrapers?
Uh, it is a historically African-American neighborhood. It's true, but, uh, that, that neighborhood isn't there now. That neighborhood is completely obliterated. There's a, if you go around and you try to imagine the neighborhood that was there, uh, in April, you'll be able to go and see an amazing history museum exhibit about that exact neighborhood. Uh, and you'll get to see some of my beautiful maps in 11-foot scale. Anyway, um...
And we're not talking about, we're not talking about, I don't think they're talking about skyscrapers either. That's a little hyperbole. It's 70 feet is hardly a skyscraper.
Right, but, uh, the thing about, you know, like IC is we're putting, it's, uh, it's so close to the freeway, there's industrial there, it's just not a nice place to put people. And, uh, that is why it's not fair housing. Uh, and in other neighborhoods that we're talking about, the Pico neighborhood, even parts of Ocean Park, uh, the people who were, uh, segregated into those areas, many of their descendants are still there and they don't deserve to be further displaced again. So those are, that, that's a different issue than what we're dealing with in Broadway, where literally every building that used to be there that was an African-American business or home, except for where, where 18th Street Cafe is, is a parking lot. It's kind of unbelievable how none, how there isn't that there anymore. And now it has the potential to be a high resource boulevard of new homes.
Okay. Well, it seems that there are some concerns about Broadway with that, but in, I don't know, Commissioner Raskin hasn't really opined on this.
I'll just say, uh, quickly that, you know, from the sa- from the, from the standpoint of developing housing, proximate to transit, Broadway makes sense. I think that, you know, we're, we're going to have to figure out a way to perhaps bifurcate height standards, um, on the half of the lot that fronts the street and perhaps the half of the lot that doesn't front the street because you're going to have, uh, some really, um, harsh and perhaps inappropriate, um, development contrasts, uh, as we're doing this. as we're doing this. So, you know, generally, I agree that, you know, we should not be putting new developments on Montana, Pico, and Main Street. And to the extent that there are underutilized commercial sites on other boulevards, then yeah, I think that makes sense. But again, we have to be nuanced in the way that we raise the height limits like this.
And I mean, I generally support putting it on any of the commercial corridors as a way to protect our residential. And I'm not totally opposed to some density on Montana, Maine, and Pico. I just want it to be a consistent application across the city. Those are my thoughts. So with that, should we move on to zoning districts? Do you have comments on the zoning districts?
Mostly just discuss that.
Okay. How about, we'll move on to number two? And see if anybody has any comments here. Just one commenter talked about it earlier. Sean, you want to talk a little bit more about 787 and talk about what that, you know, the pluses, I think you highlighted earlier, is it allows us to use some of this for our arena, but only 20%? Any thoughts that you want to put into that?
So, yeah, there are a couple of things here where I think we need to show a little bit more work. And here, we did a little bit of our own research as well. So why don't we just start at the beginning? So I think Commissioner Fresco already addressed the need to reconfirm the boundaries of the city-owned sites and just make sure we've got the capacity right. We don't need to revisit that. I think 787 specifically says 25% of our arena targets can be met through acquisition and conversion of units affordable to very low, lower, moderate income households. And actually, very low or low, I believe, and moderate, there's a limit there. And there may be some legislation pending to make moderate a possibility. But the idea there is that instead of, excuse me, building new units, we could protect existing ones. And I think this goes back to what Jing was talking about in terms of preventing displacement. If we can actively, if we can actively secure the most vulnerable rent-controlled rent-controlled properties in this way, that would be significant. But we would need to incentivize that. We'd need to make sure that our HPP is set up in such a way that it actually makes this a preferred option. And then, and similarly, and I want to acknowledge that the former chair of the Housing Commission, Mike Soloff, actually made this point when the city was looking at the bids for parking structure housing. And he said, wait, why don't we take both of the proposals and put the other proposal on 4th and 5th in Arizona? In other words, what we need to have here is, we need to have a structure in place that creates an ongoing open solicitation process. We shouldn't, you know, we need to get past the kind of custom crafted every single thing. Let's say in public what we need, what we want out of the sites. They could be for each site, you know, because we're going to want different things at each site, but let's name it and then throw it up there and let affordable housing developers come to the city and simply make a play. And if they meet the RFQ standards, then, you know, expedite production. Because if we do this one painful vote at a time, we're just never going to produce this over the course of the cycle. And I think it could be both innovative and also increase the likelihood that we could get it done. And then the last things on the list, actually, D and E in particular, one of the things that we are concerned about is whether the smaller parcels are actually viable for affordable housing production. So where there are smaller parcels that are in fact separately owned, they may be less feasible than they look at first glance on the SSI. On the other hand, there may be some parcels that actually do have common ownership that are larger than we thought they were and might be available for either inclusionary redevelopment or affordable development or more appealing for affordable development. So we just want to double check those and make sure that they are in fact viable. And then, what am I missing?
Well, let me try to understand. So on the city-owned properties, but so there's not really a connection between city-owned properties and the implementation of AB 787?
No, because the city-owned properties are functionally greenfields, right? They're not in use as housing right now.
Okay, I wasn't following that closely, but thank you very much. I appreciate that. Jing has come up, and I'm sure she has something she would like to talk about.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on AB 787. I don't believe, and we're certainly happy to look into this further. When we looked at the bill, I don't think it allows for very low and low. It's only for moderate, acquisition and rehab for moderate income units because it's very specific to meeting the moderate income arena. So, you know, it seems to be a somewhat narrowly written law. But I think in terms of the overall concept of using acquisition rehab to meet inclusionary requirements, you know, that's obviously an idea that we are going to be looking at in our HPP provisions. But I don't think that 787 allows us to.
Yeah, you're right.
For other.
There's another one that's pending that would extend it to low and very low. Yeah.
Right, yeah.
That's the one we want to follow. I don't remember the, I'm looking up the number. It was in the earlier version of the memo, but it's gone now.
I've never heard you not know a number of a bill before.
Well, because it's like. Let's not shine a light on it. He'll probably not let that happen again. But, I mean, I think the concept is, it's a great concept. If we can, you know, as the caller earlier talked about, it's a way to protect our built environment, try to address some of our arena numbers. And if we could knock out 20, 25% of our arena numbers through that type of a land use play, it's great. And the goal comes back again to who's going to pay for it, but we have that same problem with who's going to build it. But I would be very supportive of us trying to, you know, to use this type of a way to get to our arena numbers or a portion of it.
AB 1911. May help.
What's your asking?
Yeah, I've got a question for the authors of paper and also a question for city staff. But first, to Commissioners Landerson, Fresco. To the point about using small sites for moderate income housing consistent with the overlay, I don't know, why stop there? Why not incentivize all affordable housing levels if it's possible to do so?
I think it's a question of feasibility. Sure, we could incentivize it at all. But if, I mean, again, this is about responding in a meaningful way to HCD. HCD would be perfectly, I mean, not to negotiate against ourselves, but we're arguing that it may be less reasonable to expect that those smaller projects are going to be competitive, given our high land values. They're not going to be, unless the money falls from the sky, they're not going to be competitive for tax increment financing. So whereas they might be appealing with the right incentives to a moderate rate developer if it can pencil. So you're right, we should extend the incentives to everybody. But fundamentally, I think we'd have a harder time convincing HCD that it's very likely that low, very low would get, or extremely low, would get built on those sites.
Yeah, and I think we're going to have to align this with visions in the Super East Land Act that require certain affordability covenants to be put into place if housing starts are not developed by affordable housing developers. And that's going to play into the feasibility matrix here. And, you know, again, this is strictly about the city-owned sites and, you know.
Well, the city-owned small sites, it's a completely different story because the land value is what we say it is to a certain extent, right? We're talking about small privately held sites. The smaller city sites, if we're providing those at, you know, like a lease for a dollar a year, those are completely feasible for ELI and VLI.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I was, yeah, thinking in the universe of city-owned sites, which, you know, no matter how small it is, is still subject to.
Oh, yeah.
Potentially, those covenants. A quick question for staff. So, you know, adaptive reuse isn't necessarily always going to be tied to meeting arena goals. You know, to some extent, adaptive reuse can play into achieving other housing elements, facets, sort of dimensions that go beyond just arena. And there's been quite a lot of talk about just how many vacant residential units there are in the city right now. And I'm curious if you have up-to-date data about our vacancy numbers, just purely on the residential side?
So I guess just to respond to your point, you know, the exploration of acquisition rehab as an option, you know, we were pursuing that purely because it's the right thing to do. And it's a housing preservation strategy. It absolutely nothing to do with arena because we get zero credit for that at this point. I think we've discussed it through the housing element process. It's such a narrow construct as to what counts. Like you basically have to have things that are already in the works. And permits have to be pulled within the first two years of the cycle or something of that nature. We looked at it before. So it has very narrow applicability. But, you know, it's been something that's been part of the list of strategies that Santa Monica has pursued for decades in terms of housing preservation. In terms of vacant units, we haven't updated or looked at those numbers, you know, since they were published in the housing element. So what you see, and I believe it's appended to the terms of housing needs, you know, that is the most recent data we have at this point.
Jing, may I ask a question? Aren't those vacancy numbers, though? It's not just plain old vacant units. Aren't they all vacant for specific reasons, either they're vacant, their owner occupied? So they're not really vacant units? Isn't that correct?
Correct, yeah. It doesn't mean that it's just not, it's just, yeah, there are other factors that play in there.
Commissioner Fonda-Minarri?
Yeah, if you look on any one of those apartment.org and all that, they have lists and lists and lists. You can count them up. And there's always somewhere between 4,000 and 4,500 that are available for rent. So they are truly vacant units. Now, there's obviously going to be some units that are, you know, being rehabbed, whatever, you know, they're doing the carpets, painting, who knows? But, you know, in terms of what's available, there's a surprising number of vacant units in Santa Monica. Ready for leasing, if you have the money. They're not affordable, but you can lease them.
Yeah, so, you know, our data sources, we didn't just look on apartments.com. Obviously, checking for anecdotal is helpful. We were looking at, you know, census data and ACS data to sort of update it from there.
Yeah, well, the census is the great benchmark every 10 years. What we've seen with the state finance numbers is they fluctuate all over the place. And then when the census comes up, then they go back and readjust all their numbers, going back to the last census. So the point I'm making is the marketplace is speaking very loudly right now. And we can't ignore that. We should take that into consideration.
But I have to ask a question. Commissioner Fonda-Minarri, how do we capitalize on those vacancies for our housing? Because they're existing units.
Well, I don't know if we can directly because, you know, it's a choice of landlords to rent those units or to, because again, they're putting them on the market. Remember, they're saying, if you have the dough, we have a unit for you. They're also saying, we don't need that dough because we're willing to keep it high enough that they aren't filling up very fast. So, you know, it's a market forces that are at play here. We have very little control over that. You know, it's like, I don't know how we would capitalize on it.
Right, I mean, it seems to me our best shot is to put a vacancy, some kind of vacancy tax on it where we incentivize them to rent it. But I still don't think it addresses our, it fills the units, but I'm not sure it addresses our housing needs assessment. Okay, Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, I'll get to that point. And again, this is not an arena or housing production issue per se. But yeah, I think we absolutely have to look at the vacancy tax strategy as a means of utilizing underutilized housing stock in our city. And yond this idea of vacancy taxes, as floated is as an abstract concept, which I support, there are other, you know, complementary strategies such as, you know, rental assistance programs to potentially help pay for deposits and other ways to help make those units more affordable to a broader segment of the population. And other more nuanced strategies like getting rid of credit checks too, I think, can greatly benefit our city. But, yeah, I mean, to your point, I mean, this is a huge segment of our housing stock we have to look very closely at that won't, you know, help us meet our arena targets, but it's absolutely something that has to be a key part of our housing element.
You know, I just also have to say that looking at apartments.com is not really a very credible way of looking at actual vacancy rates because what apartments.com is telling us is turnover rate, meaning an apartment gets up there and then somebody moves out and somebody moves in. And it's a kind of a quick transition. And so it's not, it doesn't mean all those apartments are sitting vacant. And, you know, calling a bunch of those, you might call, oh, yeah, it's been rented. Oh, yeah, it's been rented. So I'm just not convinced that there are as many vacancies as people are saying.
I don't disagree with that either, and I question where that information comes from. But it seems like that's just a snapshot in time, looking on apartments.com, and that could change very quickly. Okay, so let's continue down the path unless we have questions on this any longer or on that one.
Forgot where we are.
I mean, I'm interested in the moderate production of housing on small sites. But, you know, I think critical importance is the incentives. But I think we're all kind of in agreement that that makes, I assume we're all in agreement that makes sense. And I don't know, we want to get into specific incentives this evening. So does anybody else have anything within section two that they want to comment on, or should we move to three? Moving to section three.
These are almost all things that have come up at meetings that we were just cataloging.
Yeah, and I would, just to say, and this is a philosophical point. I believe that what we really need to do is provide certainty within the context of very clearly defined rules. And when we provide certainty, that means then streamlined approvals, administrative approvals for compliant projects. And so part of what the underlying philosophy here is that if we can, if we can essentially make some adjustments to our development standards that make it easier to build the kinds of buildings that we want to see in Santa Monica, but we give the developers certainty that should they propose something that meets those requirements, they will have no hassles on the way to approval, that that will get us a long way toward meeting our goals. And it will also, in my view, get us a long way toward communicating with the public about what kind of built city we want to have. Because a lot of what happens is, we have these rules and then, and we have some discretion. We kind of negotiate around them. Or people come in and they exercise the density bonus and suddenly there's a building that looks a lot different from what we thought was allowed in Santa Monica. Where by being transparent about what these rules are, by being transparent about what's on the density bonus list, things like that, we actually increase public trust, paradoxically, because. We actually increased public trust paradoxically because the public knows what is and isn't allowed. Under what circumstances? And I know that's the goal of our zoning ordinance in general. But in this instance, we think that there are some places where either there are some constraints that need to be addressed. Or there are some flexibility that could be added with a lot of clarity. That, that would, that would just make it easier to, to build. I will say, uh, also following the public discussions that we've seen on a project that shall remain nameless on the south side of Santa Monica. That I, and this is outside the scope of the memo, I do think we need to find a way legally. Without reducing certainty of unit count or time to approval. To make sure that we are reviewing the, the circulation impacts of some of our larger projects. And that we have some leverage, um, to work with applicants. Around, uh, around transfer, around circulation and transportation. It's outside the scope of the memo. So I'm not going to go on at length, but it's some, it's a place where I do think the city needs to retain some. Some, some authority and some, and some public engagement. But that's, these lists you've all seen, uh, in previous meetings.
All right. And I, and I want to just highlight on one, cause we had a commenter earlier talking about public process and public participation. And, um. And I think I, I want to make this statement and, and you guys please correct me if I, if I'm inaccurate here. But, you know, the question was, will there be a public process if there is a development on a certain location? And, you know, certainly the city of Santa Monica has a very robust process that people go through. Now, things have happened over the past where there's been a lot of opposition to affordable projects. So the city has streamlined that process and has, has given less discretion to community members. In terms of what objections they can make on projects. And then the state has stepped in behind the city and been even more aggressive. So where we want to have a public process, where our hands are tied in, in certain ways by the state, certain ways. The city has said, look, we're prioritizing this type of housing. So for, for those individuals, I think they're going to be a very public process in terms of creating. The path forwards and the housing element. And this is the time where we need public participation. We need, you know, we need, when we have public comments, we need 20 people commenting and letters being submitted. We don't need two or three. I'm not saying those were bad comments we got tonight, but it's just, this is the important, really important time in the city. And when one-off projects come, come along, it's, it's a little too late and it's only going to get worse as they try to streamline these processes. With that said, Commissioner Fontanari.
Yeah. I think you, you put your finger on something very important. What we're seeing is a complete collision between streamlining and the desire for public input. And this collision leads to these bizarre situations where you might have a community meeting. And everybody knows that it's participation theater. It doesn't mean anything. There's nothing the public can say that will make a difference, an iota of difference in the outcome, even though. The project managers are saying, oh, there's a long process. We have to do this and we have to talk to public works. Everyone understands the thing is already it's a done deal. And so we can't really say to people, show up, participate if we don't give them real leverage. And that's really what the battle is. Who, who's going to have leverage on it? Uh, and I think that's what we're trying to, so when I look at something that says, oh, two acres is the cutoff. Well, two acres is a huge lot. It's, it's basically, you know, 12 city blocks, 12 city standard parcels is two acres. That's a big process of project. That's not a little tiny piece over here. That so if you want to have real input, you have to give people leverage. You have to set standards where people have leverage.
Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, I stand by my comments from prior meetings about streamlining and, uh, we don't need to repeat those. But I'll just mention that the permit streamlining act, which is an important tool for developers, does not apply to material approvals. So. Throwing that out there for, for, for thought.
I'm sorry, doesn't apply to what approve? You used a word there. I didn't catch what you said.
Oh, the, the permit streamlining act does not apply to ministerial approvals.
Oh, okay. Right.
Commissioner Landers.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'll just say this out loud. We went back and forth about the, the acre threshold. I'll be very direct. I, I would like to see some kind of an acreage threshold. That would allow us to have a circulation hearing or some sort of circulation related discretion. In order to like move a driveway or make sure there's a sight line to, to address some of these issues. I, we discussed a concern that when we submitted the housing element in October. There was no acreage, uh, there was no acreage threshold. There are a number of parcels that are more than an acre in, there are no parcels in, currently in our SSI. That are greater than two acres, except for, uh, the parcel that is identified that is currently owned and leased. To the Santa Monica Malibu School District and some private parties, uh, that parcel on 16th street. That is like three or four acres. Um, and that's going to have oodles of public process because of the school district. Uh, as far as we can tell, um, but the, the issue there is we have some concerns. Which we'll just say out loud, which is to go back to HCD after a rejection of our housing element. To say, and oh, by the way, we've added this constraint that wasn't there in the first draft. So we have some concerns about that. And the reason that we landed on two acres. Was that it covers all but one of the parcels in the suitable sites inventory. The alternative would be to, you know, sort of essentially, um, put back a discretionary review requirement. For tier one parcels that are not currently on the suitable sites inventory, but to exempt it for the parcels that we've put on the SSI. But we're, we do have some, some concerns about what impact that would have on state review. I actually think there is an argument to be made for, um, for exempting the SSI parcels. Because we've already identified them as housing sites and to have, and to have some sort of threshold on non SSI sites. Because going back to a point that is Marius made a number of times and rightly so. A lot of the development happens where we didn't expect it. And that gives us an opportunity to take a look at it and, and, um, and deal with it. So I think, I think there's some good research for staff to do on what the right way to handle this one is.
Great. Um, other comments on this section?
So, uh, item D, uh, that limit, I think really we should work with a 5% slope. Because that's what, well, that's what counts is essentially flat land. When you go over 5% in ADA rules, you've, you've turned it into a ramp and then you need rails. There's a whole bunch of other things that kick in. So I think if we are, if we need to set a slope limit. I think it should be at 5% and aligning with the FDA ADA limits.
Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah. About the affordability mix, um, just put in a plug for, uh, the idea we tossed around. About the red lines for perhaps finding a way to push off, uh, the cost of usability analyses to developers. To perhaps allow for those analyses to occur more frequently, but, um. You know, uh, taking that burden off of the city.
Yeah, I, I, I would be very surprised if this 555 survives HCD. Frankly, but that's my comment on.
We need more studies, more math.
And then on the open space issue, having like require allowing to open space be built offsite. That's what our parks fee really is addressing. I would just suggest if we're concerned about too much open space, then we should reduce our standard. A little bit, if that's really the concern, but moving it offsite, I think is problematic. And we have fees that address that, can address that.
Well, the next item on the list says to consider a maximum size for shared open space. So either you provide balconies or you provide shared open space. But, I mean, like even with, uh, Levon's project, it's like an entire single lot size courtyard in the middle of that building. And it just, I mean, you could put a soccer field in there, which I guess we need, but would be inappropriate in the middle of the building. So maybe we could have had a few more units.
Well, wait, uh, Nina, I don't understand your intention when you say consider a maximum size. We now, we do have a minimum size, but no one ever goes over that minimum. They just cut it right down to the, to the inch of how much open space they have to require. Provide whether it's on the roof or at grade or anywhere else in the building. It, it's, it's, no one goes over it. I'm just curious.
Kinds of, yeah, they do go over it all the time. We always have people saying, oh, and we've exceeded the open space. Cause our courtyard is blah, blah, blah. And, uh.
We did a dimension, but not the overall area. They rarely go over the area.
Oh, that's not true. They often exceed it. That's the one thing where they don't ask for variances on.
Well, I mean, I, I would support all the open space we can get in projects. I, I can tell you that I do a ton of affordable work and I can't remember the last affordable project that didn't ask for an, an open space reduction.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, that tells you something right there.
Yep.
It's expensive.
That it is. Okay. Anybody else have any comments on this list? I'm also very supportive of looking, looking at that high-rise issue as, as well that's on here. Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah. Just on that high-rise issue, um. This is a question for, for F. Um, I'm, I'm curious if there have been any further, uh, conversations with the fire department. Over say the last six months or so about, um, you know, uh, fire department infrastructure that might be needed. Or, you know, what costs might be to the city, uh, were the definitions to change?
No, we have not, um, had this conversation. Question has asked, we've discussed it several times, um, throughout the housing element process. And I think we're certainly happy to review, um, whatever, uh, information. I think Commissioner Lambert, um, was, was looking at, um, you know, if she can share that with us. You know, it may be, it may be the resolutions we've already seen, um, but, you know, I certainly would be interested in reviewing it. You know, but no, we, we haven't revisited the issue with the fire department because, um, it really. Seemed like it was an insurmountable issue. It's a staffing piece, you know, the, the department has not grown in equipment or personnel. Since that requirement was, was, was what was explained to us. You know, when we spoke with fire departments now. And so that was the concern with the ability to. You know, protect lives event of a major emergency.
Yeah. But Jing, hasn't, um, ha- haven't building codes changed dramatically over the last 20, 30 years?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm honestly not in a position to, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not an expert in that whatsoever. Certainly, you know, generally sure building codes evolve, um. You know, but I'm just sharing with you again, you know, the, cause we, we did pursue this issue. With our colleagues in the fire department. Um, and, you know, I think what was the. What, you know, the, the, the issue is that, um, you know. What was evident in the Northridge earthquake is that when, you know, Santa Monica called for help, there wasn't anyone available. We were on our own. You know, so that is something that is a concern. Continue.
And it, if, if I could add a little bit from what I've heard from the fire department, it's. As Jing said, I mean, we, we have talked to various people in the department. We kind of thought, you know, it's kind of, as some of you were saying, we thought this wouldn't be, you know, perhaps not that big of a deal. But it turns out they do have concerns about it. Um, it doesn't mean we can't continue to pursue it and, um, talk to, um, you know. Some of the staff is changing. So there's, um, you know, maybe an opportunity for a new discussion. But so we could certainly do that, but, um, they definitely had concerns about moving anything forward soon. So.
Okay. Well, you might ask the question about codes. If you ever have that opportunity again, but Commissioner Landers, I think I saw your hand up first and then I'll go to Raskin.
Yeah, I was just, I, so, um, the, the, um, he, here's what, here's what Leslie had, had prepared and I just will read it. So it's on the record. The following are the findings that are quote, unique to Santa Monica that were invoked to justify the change to a 55 foot definition of high-rise. And so we, given the impact of this definition of high-rise on development costs. We suspect that HCD will ask for justification for retaining the development constraint and why it differs from other cities around us. The local change in the development of high-rise first arose in November, 1996, resolution number eight, nine, six, seven, CCF. The resolution was based on A, the close proximity to many fault lines. B, the number of quote, older structures that are quote, prone to the quick spread of fire and quote. C, quote, Santa Monica's climate is primarily influenced by the Pacific Ocean. And is characterized by infrequent rainfall and winds which come from the west during the daytime. And from the north and northeast during the nighttime with intermittent Santa Monica winds occurring from. Maybe I think that's supposed to be Santa Ana, occurring from September to March. And D, quote, structures in the city are situated in close proximity to each other. End quote, on lots that are quote, often very narrow or on hilly terrain. And, end quote, and E, quote, the need for emergency fire services ellipses following a future earthquake, end quote. So I think the concern is that, um, yeah, there are some very valid findings here that relate to safety. And, you know, Chair, your questions about, um, building code evolution is absolutely on point. But the other issue is, and how are we unique, right? Relative to other cities that have successfully implemented a 75 foot high-rise. It's again, can we make the findings? Can we sustain them? Can we defend them? If we can, uh, you know, I, I wish we, you know, I, I would be interested in a more nuanced implementation. But, uh, if we can't, then we, we have an issue and we want to, we want to make sure it's addressed.
If, if I could just, may I add to, um, what Jing had said, because we've had many conversations with the fire department. It's, it's, it's all of that, as you've mentioned, but what they've conveyed to us is that Santa Monica is essentially an island. We're surrounded by, on all sides by the civil LA as well as the ocean. So in an event of like a catastrophe, a catastrophe with natural disaster. And fire, LA fire department can't come to us. You know, our department is basically strapped for resources because we couldn't be able to count on other departments from outside. And hence why that is another factor of the 75 foot high-rise requirement.
Commissioner Fontanari.
And let me give my two cents worth. Um, so, uh, when you asked, uh, have codes changed? Uh, definitely codes have changed, though there's one big change though, is that sprinklers now are practically universal in our city. And it's certainly in our high-rises. Uh, and the other thing, historically, the thing that has been saving lives has been those smoke detectors. You know, those awful things that go off and you burn something in your kitchen. Well, those things really do save lives. So the level of safety has gone up. What has gone down though, is the ability of fire departments, even in a non-total emergency like an earthquake. But even in the ability of fire departments to get to the site, given our traffic gridlock, you know, and they have to go all down these back roads and try to get there in time. So, you know, these two things are sort of competing with each other, a little more safety. But the truth of the matter is, is that everybody is entitled to the same level of safety. And the way you buy safety in high-rise buildings is you have to make them a little more fire resistant. And that's what costs the money. So what we're saying in a sense is that. We're, we're in the interest of getting more buildings and more units. We're going to be essentially increasing the danger higher up for a certain number of residents. And, and so I think that's a very, a very dangerous trade-off and one that's very hard to make to really know what's there. We do know that our city is kind of interlaced with earthquake faults. Many more than appear in the original maps of our city when in 1996, the knowledge of earthquakes was a lot more primitive than it is now. Unfortunately, we've learned a lot. So that's another thing that has changed in the safety environment.
Commissioner Raskin.
Just two, uh, real quick points. One is, uh, you know, I, I do think it's important for us to give deference that's due to fire safety experts. Know more about their craft than, than we do, um, you know, as much as perhaps we'd like to see, um. You know, a modernization of. you know, a modernization of, of, of building standards, we have to, uh, you know, be realistic about the public safety potential of, of our safety city. And, um, you know, to that point, if we do end up changing the definition of a high-rise, I think we're going to have to look, uh, in our secret documents as to whether that would require the construction of new storage facilities for ladder trucks and other equipment that could potentially cause environmental impacts indirectly. So, things to consider.
Yep. I've never seen anybody successfully best the fire department. It's a hard, it's a hard argument to make. Okay. Commissioners, any other comments on on this or the appendix? On this section or the appendix?
Uh, well, I, I would like to, uh, thank the three people who worked on this because they've really helped our decision-making and focusing on the problem issue and really polishing up things that we had started two meetings ago. And these, these, these questions and these way they were presented kept them in focus. I think they've done us a great service to allow us to get down to the real questions or as much as we can and try to give direction to staff so they have something to run with. And I think they provided us a very valuable service.
I agree.
Okay. And again, if I could just add on the appendix, um, and thank you for saying that, but this is to your point. These are things where we're flagging them for further study. And I think at the end of the, end of the day, staff may conclude that you know, any one of these things is absolutely critical to fix in order to get to compliance. Or, you know, maybe something that we've taken a look at and now we can show our work a little bit more clearly that it is in fact not a significant constraint and it is worth in fact keeping a particular requirement in place, maybe what we just discussed about high-rises, for example, but we felt that it was important to name all of these things so that when we submit a new revised housing element, again, reflecting what we heard from HCD, that we show that we did our work, that we asked the questions, that we came up with answers that we feel confident that we can defend. Uh, because at the end of the day, um, that is also what they were asking for. Was essentially for us to show our work, backstop our work. And we hope that this memo will provide some, a little bit of a roadmap to where, where we can show our work. And we're, you know, we look forward to hearing from, from staff. We really appreciate the feedback from, from colleagues. Uh, but we also look forward to hearing from staff about, you know, what those findings look like.
Great.
And on that note, just, uh, to add that there were a lot of questions in there, or some questions in there of staff about fair housing and, uh, historically, uh, segregated populations in Santa Monica. And I do have a lot of information about that, so before you go spending a lot of time looking for stuff, you should ask me.
A, a wealth of resources on this commission right now. And I somehow I sense staff can use all the support they can get. There's a lot to do and there's not a lot of staff and but not a lot of guardrails on this process right now.
And now Melissa's leaving.
Yeah. And that's a concern. Okay, so good discussion. I, I think we're wrapping up this 3A discussion. So last opportunity tonight to get in some last words, if anyone has it. Not, I'm going to move, move the agenda along. Okay. I'm going to move the agenda on. We do not have any commit, continued items. We have no staff administrative i- items. We have no public hearings tonight. No resolutions. We have written communications that were sent to us. One, we spent a fair amount of time talking about tonight. The other ones, um, I would suggest you read if you have not already read. Do we have any future agenda items that we'd like to see on the, on this? Probably the answer is housing element, housing element, housing element. Okay. And then public input, if staff could go ahead and start our clock for us. This will be the caller queue. So if anybody has public comment on any items that were not on tonight's agenda, this would be the appropriate time to call in. And let us know what's on your mind. That's our one minute. Melissa, can you let us know for the last time if we have any callers?
For the last time, we have no callers in the queue.
Okay. Well, with that, commissioners, I would like to, uh, from all of us, say thank you again to Melissa. We appreciate all your hard work. And appreciate, well, appreciate your work and look forward to seeing you in the future and hope your future endeavors go fantastic. But what I would like to do is adjourn this meeting with the thoughts of folks in Ukraine and the conflict that's going on there. Situation. You should be so lucky to just have to fight with HCD. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting and I wish you all a good evening. Bye.